And gentlemen, I am Kevin Rigstad, the chairman of the Goffstown Zoning Board of Adjustment. Welcome to the May ZBA meeting. I'm going to read through some introductions, instructions, and guidance as we go through this evening. The Goffstown Zoning Board is an elected board of five members and up to five appointed alternates. Currently, the board has five elected members and one alternate. If anyone is interested in serving on the ZBA, please see Derek Corn for more information. The board has a posted agenda for each meeting and tends to follow the items in order. The board will open a public hearing on an application to receive testimony from the applicants, abutters, and affected parties, and ask questions about the appeal. The public hearing will then be closed, and the board will enter into a deliberative session to discuss the merits of the appeal. For each application, the board will decide to approve, approve with conditions, deny, or continue to a later meeting. You are welcome to watch the deliberations this evening, or you can contact Derek Corn at Town Hall to get the results. For an applicant's request to be approved, there must be an affirmative vote of at least three members. An applicant can request a continuance if there is not a full five-member board to act on an application. If you are aggrieved by a decision made by the ZBA tonight, you have the right to appeal to the Superior Court. However, before appealing to the Superior Court, you must request a rehearing with this board to preserve your right to appeal. Rehearing requests must be filed within thirty days of the decision, and state all reasons why the decision was illegal or unreasonable. Failure to request a rehearing may forfeit your ability to appeal to Superior Court. One item, just so that everybody in the town of Goffstown can hear you, for tonight and for the record, when you please speak before the board, please come up to the table that's in front of you, sit, state your name, and we'll proceed from there, and that way your bright shiny face can be seen on TV as well. And with that, we'll introduce the board, starting with...
Ed Loopy, member.
Kathy Hooton, member.
Gala Brett, member.
Lynn Stewart, alternate.
And Derek Horn's staff.
And Ms. Joanne Duffy is not going to be able to join us tonight. She is a board member. In that case, if Lynn, if you could be a voting member for this board this evening, that'd be great in all cases. So with that, we're going to hit our agenda. And the first item is approval of minutes from April 6th, and they were available online. Does anybody have any items? All right, I got four.
Of course you do.
The absolute last line on page three. It says cook, but it should say coop, very minor. Page fourteen...
The last line and the last...
On page three.
Okay.
It should just be, say coop. Page fourteen, second paragraph. This is where Patricia Pansyaco... The first sentence, I think, is just missing a phrase, so I believe she stated, "said at the time the property wasn't," and it's missing, "well understood," is a phrase that she used. The paragraph goes on and describes that, but it's kind of hanging there.
Okay.
Third paragraph. I was stating, and there's an extra word on it. It should remove the word "not" in the fourth paragraph, should read, "now understanding thirty feet is not enough, you are asking to increase the buffer into the adjoining property." The last item I have was paragraph four, where Joanne was talking about the elevation differences between the Martel property and the adjoining property. It said, she said Pat Pansyaco pointed out before that you have an eight-foot difference between the setbacks for the lots. And I believe it was elevation, because she was talking about water flow and wasn't dealing with setback. And she talks further, the water's going down towards Ruth Meadows, et cetera, so that's all I have. Any other comments, any motions?
Make a motion to accept, has amended.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Abstained, since I wasn't on the board at that point.
All right, very good, four, zero, one. All right, we have three items on our list tonight, and we're going to, I believe, go in order on them. So I'm going to go with the first one. Tom Locke, and someone can correct me once they come up. Applicant is seeking variances to allow the construction of a five-foot by fifteen-foot addition that will not conform to the required front yard setback, and will be located within the wetland and surface water conservation district. The land within one hundred feet of surface water, in this case, the Maskey Lake, is in the water, surface water conservation district, herefore known WSWC. A variance is required to allow the construction of the addition in the WSWC district because Section thirteen point three point five point two of the zoning ordinance prohibits construction of any structure within the WSWC district. The proposed addition will be set back forty-one feet from the surface water. A variance from Section four point three of the zoning ordinance is required because the proposed addition will be set back approximately eighteen feet from the property, excuse me, the front property line, whereas Section four point three requires a twenty-five-foot front yard setback. The property is located at one four four Moose Club Park Road, which is map twenty-one, lot one fifteen, in the residential two district. The property is owned by Jennifer Levi and Marie LaRoche. And sir, you are?
I am Tom, I'm Tom Locke, and Jennifer and Marie are here behind me. This, I don't know if you had notes of this, that this has also gone through conservation last week?
And sir, before you continue, I'm going to ask one question of the board. We have to make a determination on regional impact.
I'm going to define that this application has no regional impact.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against abstain, five, zero, zero. All right, and before you continue, you're the applicant, but you are not the property owner, is that correct?
I'm the contractor, the property owners are with, I'm representing the property owners who are right here.
Okay, all right, please continue.
Basically, if you look at the drawings that were provided, where we're going to be putting the addition... If you look at existing, there's the existing, and then there's proposed, the drawings. As far as the road setback, being eighteen feet, the current house is probably about five or seven feet from the road. We're not going any past that. And then as far as the water, we're forty-one feet from the water, where the current existing deck is already thirteen feet. And these are all existing.
Okay, do you have anything else to say, or?
That's it.
Can you walk me through the variance criteria a little bit as you put in on your application? And speak to that?
Criteria being, there's not another spot on the home to build anything like this. If we go closer to the water, we're closer to the water, we go to the side. We have side setback issues to the other side of the house, it's the only place in the house that this could be constructed.
Okay. And you talk to the public interest, you talk to spirit of the ordinance? Would you like to elaborate on any of those?
Again, going back to the original setup of the home, the building of, the way it was built, the property locations at the time, it leaves no other way to get, have this project done, and no other way. It's going to add value to the home, to the surrounding homes, additional tax space for the community. And it's reasonable, because of the size of the home, to add some additional space for them.
Okay, I'm going to open up the board, do you have any questions? Ms. Locke?
Prior to the district, the water district being, coming as ordinance, what was the setback from the river?
There was no setback from the river. There would have been a thirty-foot setback because along the water, that would be the rear property line. But there was no setback from the river.
Okay.
As far as the town's concerned, there was shoreland protection, but not through the zoning ordinance.
Everything that's there, including the deck, has been permitted through the town.
That's what I was looking for, is the permit for the deck?
Yes.
It was.
Yeah, that went through, my recollection is about two years ago.
At two thousand eight.
Right before the changes to shoreland protection went in.
Is this going to be a sunroom use?
It's, no, it's just, it's an addition.
Mine says proposed sunroom.
I'm sorry, well, addition, addition slash sunroom, I mean, we've got a door, a couple of windows, it's nothing in terms of sunroom usage.
Is this going to be insult, typically a sunroom, lots of windows or insulated, something that's made for four seasons?
This is meant for four seasons, yes. This would be insulated, sliding glass door, two windows, I believe, the existing structure. The drawings, do you have a copy of the drawings?
If it doesn't tell me much about the house.
This is...
See what we got?
Perhaps the best way, if you can...
We don't have that.
From the photo, if you have the vision card there. You know, where, if you can sort of give us an idea, looking at the photo on the back of the vision.
This color one here is very...
Okay, the color one.
Okay, looking directly, everyone has the color photo. If you see the first building that juts out, closest to the road with the roof that's separate from the house, you can see the two roof lines, that little building right there. We're going totally adjacent to that and not going past the footprint of the house on that right-hand side.
Okay. So basically, you're just extending down that side of the house within the footprint of the building.
Right, we're not going any further to the street, we're not going any further to the water than anything is at all.
We've got a conceptual room there, could we pass that around, just so we can see that it's modified? Well, that's being passed around. Simple questions for me. So if you were to put this addition in, do you see that it has any negative impact to the river, or, excuse me, to the lake? Any effects? You know, we look at why the water surface, water conservation district was put into place, try to protect the water there.
Mm-hmm.
So do you see any negative impacts that this would cause to?
None whatsoever, this is being done on footings, it's not a full foundation. The distance from the water, it's... In terms of the digging, when we dig, we actually will dig the footings by hand. We'll have no heavy equipment out there that could possibly wash anything into the water. If you'd like some silk screening or something like that to make sure, no problem putting something to that effect when we do the build.
Are there other properties as close to the water as this property is?
Yes, there's, again, I didn't specifically look at every single property in the area, but there's many properties that are virtually waterfront.
How's the property from the street to the water, does it slope or is it fairly level?
It slopes.
It slopes down?
Yeah, well, not until you get, once you get past, from where we're going to build, it's relatively level. And then from then on, then it starts to break off, say about ten feet after from where we build, it really starts to drop off significantly, but up in that point, it's mildly graded.
This wouldn't impose any additional drainage, you're not talking about any kind of plumbing, just electrical service and heating?
Correct. And again, heating, at this point, is not even a deciding factor whether or not they're going to introduce heat into at this point. They just use the heat from their pellet stove, just opening it up.
When you went to the Conservation Commission, so last week?
Yes.
Did they have no comment, or were they in favor of it?
They were in favor. As the building inspector, if, on the notes on both of these, I believe, he was in favor, had written a positive comment as far as, to approve.
I'm looking at this update Derek gave us today, no issues or concerns for conservation?
Okay, any other questions, Mr. Locke? Okay, thank you, we reserve the right to call you back up, obviously, right?
Okay.
Any other people want to speak on behalf of this applicant? Was that a yes, no? No, anyone against this application? Any interests, any abutters or interested parties? Thank you. All right, any, any questions for anybody before we close the public hearing on this?
No, I don't have any.
Kathy, Ed, good?
No, I don't, I don't, I ask my questions, I'm pretty set.
Okay, all right, we're going to close the public hearing on the application, discuss it now?
Yeah.
All right. Any comments, issues, motions?
We'll make a motion to approve the variance with the proviso that silk screening be placed between the construction site and the waterfront for the duration of the construction.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
I think we hit through all the staff notes, the Conservation Commission looked at it, didn't have any issues. Just a little water and sewer. And all abutters are notified, so...
I just want to be sure that I do understand that there were no issues with Conservation Commission, and that they didn't feel that they, as stated here, they have no issues or concerns. I haven't read the minutes, and I'm sure...
I just was working on the minutes today, and I knew the answer to the question.
Was it you?
I just wanted it in the record.
Okay, so, okay. Exactly, that's good, so that's fine with me.
That's, okay, and I'm satisfied the criteria were met. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this variance, and actually, it's two variances, right? Two different issues, but they're listed with a condition that, that screening would be in place to prevent any silk, dirt, et cetera, from walking, washing into the water. Any other comments before we vote? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed or abstained, five, zero, zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great job.
Okay, moving on to the second item. Falcon Heights Properties LLC applicant is seeking a special exception to allow the construction of an attached accessory dwelling unit that will measure six hundred and fifty square feet and conforms with Section five point two of the zoning ordinance. Section three point twelve point eight point six of the zoning ordinance authorized a special exception for the use. The property is located on Elba Drive, map nine, lot twenty-five dash one, in the agricultural district.
I make a motion that we find that there is no regional impact.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, no regional impact, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Abstained or against, five, zero, zero?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, sir, you are?
Joe Booshman.
And you are the owner or the, representing the?
The owner.
Okay.
Here on behalf of Falcon Heights.
Okay, please proceed.
We had provided some drawings of the home that we'd like to build on lot one. Does have an accessory dwelling unit. We meet the criteria for the accessory dwelling unit as far as no outside entrances or exits. We do have a three-car garage on the property, as well as obviously a parking area in front of all three bays to accommodate for the extra parking space that's required. We feel that the, you know, the house would fit into the neighborhood, and we have a consumer that would like his parents to live with them. As you can tell by looking at the floor plan on the first floor, it's very open. Their kitchen and their living area are completely open to each other, and we would just like the ability to build a home for them.
So the whole, the entire home is not built right now?
Correct.
Okay.
Just a vacant lot at this time.
All right, so we go through the request for special exception criteria. First, it's got five items on it, so would you like to speak to any of these items?
I'm content with what's written if, if the board is content with that.
All right, of course, we speak to master plan. Size or frequency of use, and the character of the neighborhood. Use will not create a nuisance or hazard. The proposed lot, excuse me, the proposed location of sufficient size. All setbacks were, there are no issues with setbacks, I see? The locations of sufficient size to allow appropriate buffers. Can you describe the neighborhood a little bit?
As of this time, it's a seven-lot cul-de-sac with no homes erected. We anticipate the homes will be somewhere between twenty-three hundred square feet and thirty-three hundred square feet. This one's somewhere around twenty-six hundred square feet. This would be the first house that we would build on this new road.
On the new road, so the road is not even constructed itself?
Nope, the road is constructed, and the lots are mapped out, the fire cisterns in, but there's no homes built as of yet. So this, this would be our first sort of customer that's come forward and said, can you build this for us? We'd like this to be built on lot one, that's a lot of our choice. We went to Derek, and Derek said, you can do it, but you need to go to the ZBA for a special exception based on the design.
Okay. And...
Yeah, because of the accessory unit.
Accessory unit. Does, I'm looking at this...
Yes.
This, Elba Drive, does that go all the way down, or did, did, did you explain to me what the...
Elba Drive comes off of Tarrell Hill Road. It's approximately a thousand-foot cul-de-sac.
I'm trying to follow this green line. I'm just trying to see where the width of the road is. Does the width stay the same?
The width of Elba Drive?
Yes.
Yes, it's a fifty-foot right-of-way with approximately twenty-four feet of pavement centered on the fifty-foot right-of-way.
Do you see what I'm, it looks like?
Yeah, well, what the, it looks like in the drawing, they've left out the near side of the road. Or maybe, I don't know.
It's underneath that hatch line.
It's underneath the hatch line, you're right. Then it emerges from it on the other side.
I think it's underneath the underground drainage structure.
Okay, I see it now, yeah. And that's all ground drainage along that side of the road?
Ground drainage or underground?
Underground, you're saying.
Underground, yep, catch basins and underground. On the whole street.
And that goes down to that detention pond that's down here?
Yep, the back right corner, as you're facing it from the road, is the detention pond, where all the underground stormwater management structures drain to.
Are you intending, intending to make this, this type of attached accessory dwelling unit part of the subdivision, is something, you're advertising something, you're, you believe it's this unique, this one case?
Absolutely, it would be the first time in Goffstown that we've ever built a accessory dwelling unit.
Initially, in a property like that?
Yeah.
Because we've had them come before us before, you know, built later on?
Especially in a brand-new subdivision like this, it's not something we see very typically. I understand the situation of the specific consumer, it's what they want. But no, we have some customers for lot seven, and it's, you know, a traditional twenty-four hundred square foot colonial, two-car attached. We're not playing up accessory dwelling units.
Okay.
And why not? And why not?
Anyone else have any questions?
You said a little bit ago that Derek had told you the special exception is required based on the design of the house?
Yes.
So you're committing to the design that you have here?
Yes.
And you know it's going to fit on the lot?
Absolutely, the actual footprint on the septic design is the actual footprint of the house. Honestly, we had submitted for the building permit, and the building inspector said, I don't have a problem with it, but you probably need to go see Derek.
Good move, it's an attached.
Any other questions?
Do you, you said that you have the approval from the state and the town?
Yes.
Of them, you don't have them with you, do you?
I do apologize, I'd be happy to have you put it as a condition to provide the approval number. I did put a call into him at like four o'clock today, but I didn't get it. But I know we have it.
Okay.
Actually, the state calls it a four-point-five-bedroom system for this, that's what they classify it as.
The accessory unit is one and a half, or one and a half bedrooms, I should say.
Okay, that was just a concern, because I know you had referenced it quite a few times here, but...
One and a half bedrooms? Yeah, it's not a simple bedroom, it's, they classify it as one and a half bedrooms when it's a single fam, or like an in-law apartment.
Are any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here speaking in favor of this application? Anyone against this application? Abutters or interested parties? All right. Any, do we need to keep the public hearing open for any reason? Any other questions?
I don't think so.
Okay, with that, we're going to close the public hearing. To deliberate now? Any motions?
I make a motion that we approve the special exception with the condition that the state septic system, state and town, approved plans are with file, are included.
That's septic for both, state and town?
Yes.
I'll second. Any discussion?
I'd like to include, if you wouldn't mind, the condition, or just that what he represented is what we're approving, as far, especially concerning the design of the house. So if it's the design of the house were to change, then we might have to come back.
I have no problem amending the motion to include that as a condition.
Mr. Loopy, would you like to change your second?
Second, that has amended.
Okay, any other items or discussion? Alright, so we have a motion and a second to approve this special exception with two conditions. One, that the approval comes with, they need to provide the state and town septic system plans.
Approved plans.
Approved plans.
Right.
And that the second is that they would, that the design presented this evening is what is being built. If it is changed, we need to come back. I think that's what we represented. Alright, with that, we have any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? Five zero zero, ready. With that, we go to our third application for the evening. Third application, Scott Buckland applicant is seeking variances to allow him to operate his boat repair business from his residence at one-one-five Dannis Park Road. The applicant has requested variances from section three-point-seven-point-one of the zoning ordinance to allow mixed non-residential and single-family use. Section three-point-eleven-point-F-point-one for sale of goods. Section three-point-eleven-point-F-point-two for outdoor storage. Section three-point-eleven-point-G-point-two for boat repair and service. And section three-point-eleven-point-G-point-five for the sale and installation of parts and accessories. The property is located at one-one-five Dannis Park Road, which is map twenty-five, lot twenty-seven, in a residential two district. And before we proceed, we need to make a decision on regional application.
I make a motion that has no regional impact.
Give it to Lynn. Okay, we have a first and a second, that this application has no regional impact. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, against or abstain. Okay, with that, who is speaking on behalf of this applicant?
Good evening, my name is Flip Galant.
Good evening, Mr. Galant, excuse me, Attorney Galant. Would you like to make a statement at this time?
Oh, yes, I do, thank you for reminding me. I just want to make a statement upfront. I noticed in a lot of the documents that, I think it was somebody who's familiar with the applicant, there's a Daniel or somebody LeBruck. Same last name as mine, but it is no relation, so I just don't want that to be confused as any form of bias.
David LeBruck.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, if I may. If I could speak to the application, certainly the application speaks itself, I'm not going to read it in entirety, but I would like to highlight it. And what I'd like to do if I could is start with item number four of the application. That is that the values of surrounding properties would not be diminished on the basis that we set forth for that proposition. The reason being is that here at the hearing is the gentleman who's referenced in the application, Michael Sherlock, who's a licensed residential appraiser. And to the extent that after I complete perhaps this portion of my presentation, should the board have any questions relative to his report, which was submitted with the application, perhaps the board may want to consider it at that time. The report, which is dated April twelfth of two thousand and ten, I'd like to start by just briefly touching upon Mr. Sherlock's qualifications. He's the owner of Sherlock Appraisal Associates and he's been a licensed residential appraiser since nineteen eighty-one. He's certified, as I say, as a residential appraiser. He also has an IFA designation as an independent free fee appraiser. He's also a licensed real estate broker. His affiliations are numerous and I think his experience as a licensed real estate appraiser on the residential side is quite extensive and speaks for itself. As set forth in the report, page two, it clearly sets forth the purpose of the study. His task was to make a determination as to whether or not any negative effect to the market value or the marketability of abutting properties located on the subject street, which is Dannis Park, which is directly attributable to the commercial use in the subject property for which a variance is being sought. He goes through and on page four, he indicates the steps that he took. And specifically, I would draw the board's attentions to numbers two, four, and five. In addition to the physical inspection of the neighborhood, as well as review of town information, he also took a look at information obviously available through the town, multiple listing service, as well as, in concert with, I should say, in developing this particular study. I think it's also important to point out that he also sets forth some terminology that I think is of some significance, especially here. Page six, he talks about something called locational obsolescence. And looking at the bottom of that page, the last paragraph, he talks about, or defines that as the impairment of desirability or useful life of a property resulting from negative environmental forces outside the subject property. Locational obsolescence is almost always incurable due to the fact that real estate is in a fixed location. Going to page seven, he defines what constitutes the neighborhood for the purposes of his analysis. He defines the neighborhood as, on the north and easterly boundaries, as being bounded by the Piscataquag River, south to Moose Club Park and west to Route one fourteen. He goes on in the third paragraph to say that the multiple listing service reports a hundred and fifty-four sales in Goffstown in the year prior to this report, and he sets forth what the range selling, average selling price was, as well as the listing price and marketing time. Now, as far as the meat of the study, he sets forth two charts that if I could go to page twelve, talks about an analysis of those charts. And then if I could, in taking a look at this analysis, go back to the charts themselves. He indicates that all properties located on the street chart, which I would submit to you as chart one, are all listed. All sales that have taken place in the neighborhood as he defined it, including those situated on Dannis Park, are set forth in the second chart. As he goes on to say, he analyzed both charts to develop an opinion of value as to whether or not there's a negative effect on the market value or marketability of the abutting properties. Or to the properties located on Dannis Park, which is directly attributable to the commercial use sought at one-fifteen Dannis Park. Now, certainly I know the board's aware of the fact in terms of what goes on at one-fifteen Dannis Park Road, the fact that there has been a commercial activity at that location for quite some time. And I think that was taken into consideration by Mr. Sherlock when he arrived at and conducted his study. If I could go down to the second-to-last paragraph, that indicates, from the second chart, it's apparent that the sales on the street are marketable. The sales on the street represent approximately thirty percent of the total sales in the neighborhood in the past two years. Now, if I could go back to the charts, charts one and two. Charts one, as I say, lists the property by street address, indicating the acreage, the size, the assessed valuation. And the second chart, sales indicating single family as well as whether or not they're on the water. I believe that the designation SFRW would indicate water. So what he goes on, he does, going back to the analysis, is he says in that last paragraph, narrative paragraph, in the analysis section on page twelve, "Due to there being no sales abutting the subject property that appear to have sold in the past two years, in an effort to develop an opinion as to whether there's any actual difference in the market value of properties located on Dannis Park in the neighborhood, he was able to pair two sets of sales on the second chart." So basically, what he does, if I understand it correctly, and I believe I do, the first set, he says, indicates thirteen S and one S, that relates to the sale, particular listing on chart two of the sales themselves. And he goes through and he conducts an analysis, making the, what he believes to be the appropriate adjustments based upon the differences in terms of the properties as far as their makeup, both on Dannis Park and in this case, Chattel Avenue, and makes the determination, as you see, that the adjusted sales price of both properties, the one on Dannis Park coming to ninety thousand dollars, the one on Chattel Avenue, eighty-nine thousand eight twenty-eight, basically establishing the proposition that there is no difference in value in terms of the properties located on the subject street as well as that on Chattel, which is again within the neighborhood as he defined it. Same analysis in terms of those two properties that he enumerates in item number two, sale fourteen S and eight S. Goes through the same analysis and he ends up with an adjusted sales price of those two properties, almost identical, of one-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand dollars and the one-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand seven-hundred-and-sixty dollars. And as he says, the two paired sales indicate no measurable differences between selling prices on the subject street and the selling prices in the neighborhood. And as I know the board is aware, the activity which Mr. Buckland is seeking to continue is one that's been ongoing for years, I know the board is aware of the appeal that's pending before the court, I won't get into that. The conclusion of the study is set forth in paragraph fourteen. He goes into significant detail in establishing that in his opinion, the granting of the requested variance would have no negative impact on value. And I would like to focus on number four, to go back to that phrase of locational obsolescence. Although there appears to have been no sales of the properties, abutting the subject property within the past two years, it is my opinion that due to there being no measurable difference in values assessed by the town, due to there being no measurable difference between properties selling on the street and those within the neighborhood, and due to the subject street having a typical marketability and appeal, it appears that there is probably no measurable difference. That is a direct result of the locational obsolescence due to the commercial use in the subject property for which a variance is being sought. So as to that particular element of the requested variance, I respectfully submit that Mr. Sherlock has established that there is, there is, there would be no evidence, there would be no diminution in value for the board to see fit to grant the requested variance. As I say, Mr. Sherlock is here, should the board have any questions about his report?
Any questions?
I did, I had a question.
On the, on the?
On the report, yeah.
Could I have him come up?
It was, it would be a question.
I'm going to ask you how you're going to present this case, I know there's a lot of details and you, would you like the questions about it right now or prefer questions afterwards later?
However, the board.
I don't want to interrupt your flow if you have a flow.
I have a flow, but I'm used to being interrupted, no matter what.
Trying to accommodate, we'll ask the question now.
My question would be, why in the appraisal were not any of the homes on the water used in, in the comparatives? Chart two, as you explained, if the land use has SFRW, it meant that it was waterfronted? It was on the water versus just on the street?
Before I respond, let me.
I'm just curious why those, some of those weren't part of the comparatives.
I believe.
I'm sure there's a, there is a reason.
It probably has to do with, and I'll let Mr. Sherlock address to it, because of the fact that he's looking at, he's saying in the preceding paragraph in page twelve before he gives the breakdown, due to there being no sales of abutting, of sales abutting the subject property appear to have been sold within the past two years, in an effort to develop an opinion as to whether there is any actual difference. He's been able to locate the properties that he had and it appears as though, I would presume and I would ask that he answered directly that there probably weren't any properties directly on the water within the timeframe that he was dealing with.
So no comparables, never on the water?
That's right.
Mr. Sherlock, did that?
That's correct.
Sixteen S and seventeen S are on Dannis Park?
Thirteen S and fourteen S.
On the chart, I'm, I'm on the chart.
Oh, okay.
And I could, chart two, chart two, which is the sale. And one-twenty-three Dannis Park and one-thirty-one Dannis Park were on the water. And I just was curious why one of, not being a successor myself or an appraiser myself, I'm just curious as to why one that was on the water wasn't used as a, as a comparable.
As I say, I think it has to do with the availability of comparable sales and if I understand what Mr. Sherlock just responded to, there were no sales of properties directly on the water within the timeframe that we're talking about in this study. Did I summarize that correctly?
Basically, what we're trying to do.
And you can come up, sir, please.
Thank you.
Come closest as you can to Attorney Galant so that we can get you on camera.
What I was trying to do was find comparable sales that were similar to one another. So when we do a paired sale, we want to try, for example, to find two ranches, two capes, something like that. That was not possible with the waterfronts. I was not able to find something else in the neighborhood that was similar enough to be a comparison.
Okay, okay, yeah.
I do have a question as well. So Attorney Galant made the statement that he believes that you understood and took to account that there was a business that was occurring at one-fifteen Dannis Park when you made your assessment on value.
That's correct, yes.
If there were no business occurring at one-fifteen Dannis Park, how would that impact the value of the surrounding property? Would it go up?
Wouldn't, my, my conclusion was that it, it did not make a difference. It would not matter if, it did not matter that there was a business there. But it, it, no difference at all, wouldn't go up, wouldn't go down.
Okay.
Okay? You know, basically, if I could just, a couple of comments while I'm here. You know, a couple of things, first of all, considering the property has been in operation as a small business for many years, I felt that the appropriate approach was, let's not guess at whether or not there may be a loss in value or a gain in value. Let's look at what the data tells us. We were kind of lucky in that regard, in the sense that we're not looking at something that is brand-new. It's, it's been there, the neighborhood should be reflecting losses, gains, anything that's happened is a result of that being there. So I felt that to simply deduct, for example, an extracted dollar value from properties based on sales found in a completely different, highly commercial setting. Say, for example, we go to a property that's, that's facing Mass Road with a small strip mall or a car wash or whatever happens to be. We look at that and we say, well gee whiz, that's selling for less than something else in a neighborhood setting. That may be true, but that's not what we have here. This neighborhood is established as a residential neighborhood, it's been, this has been in use for a long, long time, so let's look at what the neighborhood tells us. So it, it sort of answers your question, hopefully at the same time, from a standpoint of there is no difference in the value apparent in the neighborhood.
But you can understand my question and the fact that most cases that they were probably heard before ZBAs across the state
Sure.
are that business has not been put in yet. So you're looking at if, if we were to approve a variance to allow a business to go in or some other variance to be gone, is that most people argue that it's going to lower the value or not make an impact. In this case, we're trying to make an assessment whether or not the value would change if that business were to go away based on what it is today.
You know what, that's precisely why I took the approach I did. Because it has been existing. That's precisely why I took the approach I did, because it has been existing. My understanding is, nothing is going to change. Any effect that there would be as a result of that business being there should be felt, and I, I could not find a difference.
Okay.
Make sense?
I hear what you're saying.
Follow what I'm saying?
I hear what you're saying.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Sherlock, right?
Sherlock, yes, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Attorney Gallant, call set. Um, any other last questions, do you think, with Mr. Sherlock?
I don't have questions, but if, if anybody in the audience has questions later, I'd still have to...
Yeah, I, I agree, yeah. I don't think we want to send anybody off yet.
Now, going back to the first criteria, that the granting of the variance would not be contrary to the public interest, I respectfully submit that it, it would neither alter where the board to see fit to grant the requested variance, alter the essential character of the neighborhood, or threaten public safety, public health, or the welfare of that, that community. And in support of that, as I indicate, obviously, one fifteen Danus Park Road is located along the Piscataqua River. We submitted as Exhibit B, a plan that was prepared by Meridian Land Services, which depicts the property and shows the location of the river as it relates thereto. It's also our understanding that there appear to be two public boat ramps, one on Dumont Park and another at the end of Sunny Ave, along with a number of privately owned boat, boat ramps in that area. As to the public boat ramps, we submitted a series of photographs that were taken on December twenty-fifth, that I believe that the board has copies of, that indicate the level of activity in terms of use of that boat ramp on that particular weekend. I think that the photograph indicates it's a number of kayakers, but the point being that that's a, a location along the edge of the river that clearly is being utilized for recreational purposes, and that what's being sought here is, is consistent with the recreational purpose in terms of utilizing the river, because the service that Mr. Buckland would be providing would be for folks to utilize that very same river. In terms of the impact, if any, on the residential character of the, of the neighborhood, I appended as Exhibit A excerpts of the transcript of the hearing that was first before the board back on August the fourth of two thousand nine. Certainly, the excerpt speaks for itself, but I would, I would like to just simply draw attention to a couple of the folks who testified there. Specifically, at page ninety-two, a gentleman by the name of Kevin Miller, this is again page ninety-two, beginning at line fourteen, he indicates that he had two properties in Danus Park right by Scott's house, and I'm going to say he's never been a nuisance. The property's probably one of the cleanest properties on the street, and Scott's always been very helpful and helped everybody in the neighborhood. So I have no complaints whatsoever. I think it's the cleanest, and there's no noise, there's no nuisance. Because we'd have to pass mine to go to Scott's house, and I've never had a traffic issue. I would also, might like to make a quick reference to another excerpt at page ninety-four, Paul Gagny, specifically page ninety-four, line nineteen. He indicates he has a house at the base of sixty-nine Danus Park Road. He also owns another property on the other side of Russell Ave. And as far as traffic goes down there, everything would have to go by, that would have to go by Scott's house, has to go by my house. He has three young kids, nine, ten, and fourteen. They play in the street, it's a safe area. The only traffic that we ever see down there with, there's lots of traffic, is on the weekends. I think he means when there's lots of traffic, traffic is on the weekends, when the kayakers do their drop-off, and I think he's referring to what's depicted in those photographs. He was on the safe, from Glen Lake, they have a shuttle, fifteen cars, they come down all at the same time, nothing, normal, everyday traffic. I also would like to refer the board to, there was a petition that was drafted by Mr. Buckland that was circulated to a number of his neighbors. I want to make sure that the, it's made its way to all the board members.
We have it, I believe everybody has it, yeah.
Certainly, it, it speaks for itself. If my count is correct, it's executed by fifty-seven people in that, in that same neighborhood, all of which, all of whom appear to be in clear support of Mr. Buckland's application. And I would submit that, that petition and those folks executing it certainly indicate that from a, as it relates to this element, in terms of the public interest, these folks, if they had a concern, I respectfully submit that they obviously wouldn't have signed it. I would also point out that aside from the complaint of, of a single abutter who has filed in an objection, and I'm sure will be heard tonight, to the best of my knowledge, no other complaints have ever been lodged with the town concerning Mr. Buckland's operations. I'd also point out, as set forth in the application, this is limited to the repair and servicing of boats. I want to reiterate, no product or inventory of any type would be stored on the premises and would be purchased on an as-needed basis. No additions or accessory buildings are sought. And then I also again make reference to the plan that's been appended as Plan B, Exhibit B, excuse me.
Which plan are you speaking of?
The compiled plan that was prepared by Meridian, marked as Exhibit B, stated April eighth.
Your drawing?
Yes.
Okay. Right.
Depicts the existing house, the paved area, et cetera. As to the second criteria, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed.
Attorney Gallant, before you go on, I'm, I'm going to ask a question for you, trying to not interrupt, but this is going to help me and hopefully helps the board...
Please.
On understanding what we're doing here. We've heard a lot about this property over recent months, we've heard a lot about it, what it was, what it wasn't, but I am not clear on what's being presented tonight on what the business is. What is the business? Specifically, to describe the business, is it what it was and how it has always been for twenty years, or what are we asking the business to be in this residential neighborhood? Can you describe it? What are the services provided, the property that's, what's being done on? Is it inside? Is it outside? How many employees? What kind of traffic count? What type of vehicles, delivery? I, I have no idea what this business is. I can see what you're stating about, about how it's, you know, meets the criteria, but I have no idea what the business is.
Okay. Mr. Buckland is self-employed, has no employees. The operation itself would take place on the paved area that's depicted on the Meridian Plan. In terms of the nature of the services being rendered, as I tried to particularly, and I apologize if it wasn't clear, is that it's limited to the servicing and the repair of boats, nothing more, nothing less. Principally, and I would like Mr. Buckland to come up here just to clarify this and to make it, make it crystal clear, it's, it's principally, as it relates to electronic components of boats. And maybe, if I could have Mr. Buckland come up and just elaborate on that?
Yeah, absolutely, because it's going to be, and we've heard a lot in the past of things like, we shrink wrap boats. Do we park boats on only this property, or they're parked on other properties? How many are we speaking to? Does those impact character, public interest? Those, those are all questions that will come up.
Yes. The, the, the parking of the boats, the location of boats, everything takes place on the paved area. I'll let Mr. Buckland speak as to how many boats there may be there on any particular occasion, but there will never, ever, ever be any boats parked anywhere, put anywhere other than on the premises and on the paved area that are depicted on the Meridian Plan.
Okay.
As far as the location of the tools that are utilized to service those boats, they're all on the premises. As far as parts that are necessary to do the repairs, those are ordered and shipped on an as-needed basis. There will be no inventory maintained on the premises. There will be no parts offered for sale on the premises. Any parts that are going to be utilized are going to be utilized to carry out the servicing of those boats for repairs as needed. Now, in terms of the nature of the repairs themselves and the intricacies of the electrical components that are repaired, if I could ask Mr. Buckland to speak to that, and I'll also represent that he also does shrink wrapping, which I believe takes place in the months of October and November, to, in effect, winterize boats as we're getting into the winter season. But could I ask him to address that issue?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Could he sit at that, or would you like him?
Yeah, here, I'm told, that's the place to be.
That's the place.
And please state your name.
Good evening, Scott Buckland.
Good evening.
What I'm trying to accomplish is very light mechanical repairs. We're not going to get into engine rebuilding, we're not going to get into oil changes, anything to do with toxic chemicals, no pressure washing, no bottom washing, very light mechanicals, accessory installations, shrink wrapping, winterizing. There's no antifreeze use when it comes to winterizing. Shrink wrapping is one hundred percent recyclable, there's no smell when you heat this plastic to shrink it. What else are we looking for? Stereo installations, fish finder installations, very, very light mechanical and accessories.
Any of your work require you to put the boats into the water?
No. No, no need, no need whatsoever.
Do you use, will you utilize the road as part of parking?
My driveway is significant. There's plenty of parking for four or five vehicles, five, six, seven boats, if I needed it. I don't want to put that many there. This is still my home, so I still have my two parking spots. Usually, when a customer comes, it's mainly one at a time to drop a boat off, they use the street, they back into the driveway, they drop the boat off there. I've got a small John Deere tractor that I use. I come out into the driveway, I back it into the yard, up against some curb stops. Average, two, three boats at most.
At a time?
At a time. If I have a bigger boat, or a pontoon boat, I tend to do one, maybe two, so we're not having, we're not piling these big giant boats in there. And that's basically where we're at. So I, I've never had ten or fifteen boats in the yard, I never park in the grass, I never park next to the neighbor's house. It's all very confined. Where I can park, they really can't even see the boats. They have to go out of their way, stop at the end of my driveway, and look through the gate to see anything that I'm doing.
Any signs for your business?
Don't need one.
Any of your business, in the past, we've heard about you have an online, web-based business. Is all of that business going to be done at this location, or you still have separate businesses?
I, I still have that, but that's completely separate. None of that is coming to here, that's all online stuff.
So the business that you're describing to us tonight is, is essentially the business that you've done in the previous history?
Pretty much, but we're, we're going to limit that to, we're taking a lot of it off the table because of engine oil, fuels, any contamination stuff, we're taking it right off the table.
Is it strictly limited to boats and water-based products, not to automobiles?
Boats, watercraft, no cars, no trucks.
Would you describe your business, and this may be Attorney Gallant may help, is that, is it, would you consider a principal use, it's, it's a significant part of what this property is doing, or is it more of a, an accessory use to, you know, that your house is your principal use of the property, but this business is an accessory use or principal?
I would call it an accessory use, but I'm not sure if I'm describing that right.
I, I, I'm trying to look what it is here. As we talk, in the application, it's requesting for a mixed non-residential, single-family use. Derek, when we put the application together, is it looking for essentially two principal uses on the property? Or did we make that distinction?
Yes, yeah, that is, as noticed, section three point seven point one of the zoning ordinance to allow mixed non-residential and single-family use. So that'd be two principal uses.
Okay, great.
So I had it right?
Well, it's a principal use, not an accessory. So, but actually, no, you didn't have it.
I didn't, all right. I tried.
All right. Any other questions on what the business is that we're speaking to?
Yeah, my, my question is, this is, we're dealing with two or three addresses here, am I right? The residence is at one seventeen, but the work is going to be taking place at one fifteen.
That's been confusing for me since the day I built this place twenty years ago.
Because the application is for one fifteen Danus Park Road, but your address is one seventeen.
It says one seventeen on the mailbox, but it has for twenty years. When we first, I believe, pulled the building permit for this place some time ago, I believe the address was called one seventeen, so somewhere along the line, I stuck with the one seventeen. The tax bills come in as one fifteen, I think on my driver's license it says one fifteen.
We can ask Derek, any clarification on property address?
I think it's considered one fifteen.
You have it as one fifteen, is there any issue with property location?
The assessing department has it listed as one fifteen Danus Park, and we list everything by, by map and lot, so it may be, he may be receiving mail at one seventeen, but as the town's concerned, it's map twenty-five, lot twenty-seven.
And those, because there previously was multiple lots, so they were merged together?
As we're looking at this, all three of these parcels are considered one fifteen Danus Park?
Yes, yeah.
And it's one lot twenty-five dash twenty-seven?
Yes. The old lots, nine, ten, and eleven.
Okay.
Yeah, because we previously heard that they were merged a number of years ago.
And this, Meridian Land Service references it at a one seventeen.
If you drive down the street, is there actually a one fifteen? Because when I went to go see your property, I saw two mailboxes, one seventeen and one nineteen. I didn't even find a one fifteen.
That's where the confusion's been right along. I'm good with either or, we can call it one fifteen, we can call it one seventeen.
Can we do one fifteen slash one seventeen?
No, because the property is, as, as we identified as the town is one fifteen.
I think I've seen...
The assessing department has it as one fifteen Danus Park to the property location, but I think it's more accurate to go by the tax map and lot.
I'm not sure where, where all that confusion came in. I've, I've always called it one seventeen, and the town's always called it something else, so we can get that straightened out and put everything to one fifteen.
Just about.
All right. Any other questions on what this business is? Sir, we'll get to you at some point.
Just have a comment about the address change. I bought a piece of property, it was at ninety-three when I bought it, the town contacted me and had us change it to ninety-five.
Can I ask your name, sir?
Ray Rodea.
Okay.
How do you spell your last name, please?
R O D I E R.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Buckland, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Attorney Gallant, let, thank you for letting me go through that and just describing what the business is.
I, I appreciate the question, I apologize if, if I wasn't. I believe, as it relates to the, the spirit of the ordinance, item number two of the application, as I point out, I respectfully submit that, if granted, that not only would the general purposes of the, the ordinance, which I believe is set forth in section one point three, as far as the purpose of the ordinance, which includes such things as public safety and health, would be satisfied, but the, the purpose in terms of, as set forth with a high-density residential district indicated in item two, does make reference to recreational activities within, within that particular district. And the reason why I make reference to that is because the nature of the, of the business that Mr. Buckland is looking to continue on with is to facilitate the utilization of, of boats that would obviously be utilized in the Piscataqua River, which is obviously a very popular recreational area. And as such, I, as I indicate, I don't believe, given the history, as well as the scope of what he's looking for permission to continue to do, as well as the evidence that's submitted in terms of the appraisal information, the folks that have spoken in support of the application, as well as the activity, as far as to take a drive-by there tonight, it certainly, what's being sought here is not inconsistent with the spirit and the intent of the ordinance, which is to keep the overall character of that neighborhood residential. I, I think that, as Mr. Sherlock had testified to, looking at that particular piece of property, going by it, you'd have, you'd be hard-pressed to find that there was a commercial activity going on out there. That's just the nature, the way in which it's been operational and would continue to be so if the board were inclined to grant the application. As far as the third, the third requirement, as far as it would do substantial justice, and what I cite there is, is that the granting of the variance would do substantial justice... and what I cite there is that the granting of the variance would do substantial justice, because to deny him the opportunity to continue forward in terms of his repair and service business wouldn't result in any appreciable gain to the general public, because there's been, absent one a butter, and I believe that's the only complaint, again, there would be no appreciable gain to the community because of the fact of the general public, because there's been no complaints lodged. Now, I will address, and if the board permits me to do so, some of the assertions made in the objection. But I think the evidence speaks for itself that if the board, again, were inclined to grant the application, that it would continue in such a way that there would be no impact upon the general public whatsoever. The issue about the surrounding properties, item number four, no diminution of value has been spoken to. The last requirement, as far as undue hardship, specifically, the proviso that owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties, the denial of variance would result in an unnecessary hardship, because, first subpart, no fear and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance and the specific application of that provision to the property, because we're dealing with activity that I know the board's well aware of in terms of what's been ongoing, what Mr. Buckland is seeking to do, and that given the fact that he's been able to do it without any impact in terms of on the general public, he's looking to do so consistent clearly with the purpose of the ordinance as set forth in Section one point three. And that I believe that the information set forth in the preceding sections as it relates to the activity, the history, the information that's been supplied for this evening's hearing as far as the excerpts from the hearing back on August the fourth, as well as this most recent petition from the folks that live in the neighborhood, it's clear that if these folks had an issue, that from a general public standpoint, they would certainly advance it, and clearly, this business has and can continue to operate being consistent with the general public purpose. The proposed use, I would submit, as far as the second component, is a reasonable one, as again evidenced by the history of the operations, and that it can be operational and continue to operate in such a way that it at the same time would be satisfying the intent and the purpose of the zoning ordinance. Now, if I could, I would like to address the objection that was offered, but I don't know if the board would consider that premature, if they'd like to hear from the objecting party first.
Yeah, we'll do that, we'll hear from the, do you have any other prepared remarks that you want to go through before we-
The, I have remarks as it relates to the objection. The board has the petition, the additional materials, I think that I would just reserve my comments until after the objections were made.
Any questions for Attorney Glont, please?
I'm sorry, I didn't-
I know I have one, so you ain't going anywhere yet.
No, 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 no.
Any questions?
None of the attorneys.
You spoke to hardship is a criteria of five, one part that you missed, which is, I think, is critical before we can even answer whether the zoning ordinance is, the clarity on, or the proposed use is reasonable, is tell me about the special conditions of this property that distinguish it from other properties in the area.
I think the special condition of this property is the fact that we're dealing with, and I can't get away from it about the fact that this is a business that has been there and has been in existence for a number of years. And that, I understand that we're looking for an application for a variance to continue that operation, but the unique nature of this property is such that it has been there and has been providing this surface for decades. And so it's because of that that we're looking to advance or to satisfy that particular requirement, and believe that it's that special condition, as I tried to articulate in the preceding sections, that we're seeking to have this variance be granted. And as I say, in subpart one, that Mr. Buckland is seeking to be permitted to continue operation from the location as he has for some twenty years. So it's the unique nature of that property because of the fact that that has been going on for as long as it has. And the proximity to the river and the nature of the way in which the property is comprised, as depicted on the plan itself.
I hear what you're saying, but you're not, and I don't think you're getting to the answer that I'm looking for. So, tell me about the land, is it larger than the other properties?
It is considerably larger than the-
Is it situated in a way that, you know, this business, you get to, is this business a proper use of it? But is it different than the neighbors, is there anyone else along the Piscataqua of similar land that, you know, this zoning ordinance is also burdening? Because this zoning ordinance is not only for Mr. Buckland's property, it's for all property in the R two district.
Yes, understood.
So tell me why Mr. Buckland's property is different and unique, you know, special conditions of this property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, that he should be allowed to have this business on it, that he's burdened by the zoning ordinance? What's unique about this property?
I respectfully submit that its size, its location, and along the edge of the river itself. And as I say, it's right on the, as far as the size, again, I keep saying that, the size and the layout, it's unique in terms of compared to the other properties on Dennis Park Road to facilitate and to accommodate that particular type of operation. I don't know how else to say it.
No, one thing Mr. Buckland said is when I asked it, do we need to put boats in the water to facilitate this business? And the answer was no.
No, that's true.
So-
But the size and the expanse, the size and the expanse of it, as far as the ability to facilitate, and again, you've got, I think I'm repeating myself, it's again, the size and the location and the dimensions of the lot to facilitate that particular operation. I don't think that in terms of up and down the river, that there's anything comparable to it as far as size and dimension and location and layout.
How about one thing, a little bit off the hardship, talking about the roads, I know that area is gravel road down to that area. As far as traffic, number of vehicles, how many, frequency, size? Can you describe any of that?
I might be able to answer that a little better.
Well, okay.
Just, you know, because I'm trying to address impact a little bit.
I think I'm, Scott Buckland? The, a couple of things, my driveway's very wide, it's very long, so that helps me in order to facilitate, you know, three or four boats and cars and stuff in the driveway. I think on my best year I've had, I think I serviced two hundred and sixty boats total, it's less than one a day. What else are we looking for here?
Do you have a service, you have parts delivery every day?
No, not always, some stuff I don't even need parts for, a lot of stuff, it's just, you know, an issue with a dirty cable, a dirty battery cable, sometimes you can just clean it, blown fuse, stuff like that.
So you believe the roadways to your area, because it is definitely a residential area?
It's definitely a residential area.
So you believe the roads are sufficient to handle this type of traffic that would come in to support this business?
There's more traffic going by me that comes to me. I think an average, you know, one, two a day, at best on an average, the fall's my busiest season. We shrink wrap and winterize a couple of boats, a few boats a day. Last Sunday, there was, I think I counted, twenty-five kayakers, and they all come down in one herd. And they all come down, and they're there for a couple of hours, and they all come flying back out, there's definitely way more traffic doing that. And in the summertime, you've got a marine patrol that comes down, they use that little boat ramp, there's four, five, six boats on an average day coming down to use the little boat ramp on Dumont Park, that definitely brings way more traffic than I've ever had. If that helps.
Alright, does your business require that you be on the water?
It's where I am.
I understand that, does it require that you be on the water?
Sometimes I'll get drive-by traffic, I'll have drive-by traffic. Last year, we had a gentleman that was out on the water, in fact, a friend of his is here tonight. He had an amphibie car, there was three amphibie cars coming up, coming up the river at once, this gentleman had a problem. And his hundred thousand dollar car was going to sink right out in front of our house. We threw this guy a rope, I think I actually went onto the water, tied it onto his car, and I dragged him out of the water. I think being on the water saved that guy's car. And there's quite a bit of that, you'd be surprised how many people we'll see coming down on the water that'll have a problem. And, you know, they'll stop by and say, hey, Scott, can you help? Sure, go pull your boat out somewhere and bring it down. There's a lot of, I service a lot of boats that are in the neighborhood, in fact, these people here will tell you that I think it's crucial that we're on the water.
If something comes up like that, and they say they have an engine problem, and you have to handle hazardous waste, do you have a plan and position to handle that?
I'd have to turn it away. I've got some other friends that are in the business that would probably be more than happy to have some more business if that issue come up. And at the same time, they send me some work too. One hand kind of washes the other with that stuff.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Buckland?
There was some reference in the material that was submitted, which mentioned about DES and the state. Is there any update from the state as to, or anything?
Nothing at all, have we heard from them at all?
I don't know the material that you were per- The wall issue, or, there was two issues with the DES, one was a water-
It wasn't particularly any issue, it was a reference that was made. I think it's in this package.
It is in that package, yes.
It says, "In addition, there remains ongoing investigation regards to material being released into the river from your property." Please, and this is dated January fifteenth, two thousand and ten, from the Department of Environmental Services. I'm just curious if there has been anything new, because it says, "Please provide any information relative to the origin of this material." So, where does this investigation with the Department of Environmental Services and your business, where is it as of today? It has a file number and everything.
I want to make sure that I have a copy of exactly what it is you're referring to.
January fifteenth, it's in this package, which was received May third as a copy of the, and this is the-
From attorney, it's a package that we received from-
Was this part of the package that we received from the other Hobbs's attorney?
Mr. Attorney Bison?
The letter she read from is from the DES, specifically dated January fifteenth.
Yeah.
I'm just curious as to how this got its way into the material before the board this evening, because this is the first I'm seeing of it.
Okay.
Okay.
I can address it, but I don't want to make it look like I'm trying to skirt a question, that's the last thing I want to do.
No, this was stamped May third, which is yesterday, I don't know what time it came in.
I wasn't here yesterday, so I don't know who submitted it.
And I haven't, I hadn't seen it before tonight either, so I was just curious if, and if there was an update, and if there is one, then we would like to know.
Well, I can certainly address it.
Okay.
I'm a little, it's a little disconcerting to me, in all candidness, that something is submitted to the board and I'm not aware of it. But I will, I will address it. The letter of January fifteenth of two thousand and ten to which you referred to is issued by, as you say, the Department of Environmental Services. It deals with a number of issues, or a couple of issues, one has to do with the concrete retaining wall, as well as, I believe, the paragraph that you talk about in terms of there remains an ongoing investigation relative to material being released into the river for the property, is that what you're referring to? First of all, as to the issue about the retaining wall, that issue has been the subject of continued ongoing discussions with the Department of Environmental Services. As recently as March eleventh, myself, Mr. Buckland, and Timothy Ferwerder, licensed wetlands and soil scientists also from Meridian Land Services, met with the folks at DES, including Linda McGoon, who's one of the, I believe, the supervisory folks over there dealing with this issue about the retaining wall. The question has to do with whether or not that retaining wall that was, I believe, replaced by Mr. Buckland back some eight or ten years ago is the same footprint, the same size, the same dimension as what was there previously, which was a tire retaining wall. And originally, believe it or not, back on eleven twenty-four of two thousand and nine, I believe was the date, the department issued a letter indicating that it was the same, and then apparently they got some additional information and issued this letter. So we submitted additional information, and now the matter is still pending before the DES. As it relates to the issue about the discharge, I have with me in my materials, if the board would like to see it, an email from the Department of Environmental Services. That indicates the composition of the makeup of the water, and the fact that there is nothing in the water that was evidence of any contaminants. And the reason why I had sought this, we obtained this, in all candidness, is that documentation that was submitted to the board, apparently today, or yesterday, was somehow, some way made in the way of a lot of doorsteps of folks in the area of Mr. Buckland's property. So in anticipation that this was going to come up, we obtained from the Department of Environmental Services a fellow by the name of Walter Henderson, a biologist, the results of the study or the analysis of the water. The water is fine, based upon the samples that were taken, the board would like to see it, I can give that as well.
If we could have copies of that?
Sure.
And I'll say, it looks to be from a butter, it's not from Attorney Bison, his is a separate package, so I misstated that earlier, so I guess we'll find out later who's this from.
I think Derek, we don't need the copies now, but, or unless-
I'd have to run up samples.
No.
Yeah, right, not now, yeah, I don't need it now, I would just like, I would just like-
I have copies if you'd like, whatever you prefer.
Click the copy now, I just- Thank you very much.
Does anyone have any other questions for Attorney Glont?
Just kind of a question observation on the hardship issue, because one of the things that I think we're getting to here, an awful lot of what we've been talking about, about these special conditions, we're talking about, Mr. Buckland runs a very good business, that's obvious from, you know, the amount of neighborhood support that I see, but one thing that concerns me with this is that we're conveying a right here that travels with the property, and it's, at some point, I think in twenty years down the line, Mr. Buckland decides to retire and sell this property, we've conveyed a right to do this, I think that if there's, and again, depending on what the decision is, we need to be careful, because so much of it is, you know, contingent on the fact that you've got a responsible owner who runs a good business here, but he may not always be the owner of the property, and, you know, I think it's just a point where we have to take care.
And, yeah, I want to say, Lynette, that is definitely a concern that I have, as to whether or not, what would happen if Mr. Buckland did not own the property, and I think those are things, when I think about possible conditioning, size limitations, those are all things, as we go through this, if that's the direction to go in, that would be, that would be how I would satisfy my concerns, which I believe are the same concerns that you're mentioning right now. I had a concern, and I guess I'll ask you this, is in, obviously from the paved area and from where the existing house is to, so the river's up here, and your paved area is here. Aren't we in the, aren't we in the Wetland and Surface Water Conservation District?
Within a hundred feet of the river's edge, yes.
We are, so the paved area is within that district?
Yes.
Would he need a variance to use that paved area?
Not necessarily.
Be, because he mentioned that the operation was, and the parking of the boats would only be in the paved area.
Well, uses permitted, this is on page eighty-three of the zoning ordinance, section thirteen point three point six, under uses permitted in the Wetland and Surfer Wa- Surface Water Conservation District. Any other, any use otherwise permitted by this ordinance, provided that such use does not involve the erection of a structure and will not alter the surface configuration of land.
Thank you. What was that, what was that again?
It's on page eighty-three, section thirteen point three point six, and that is the first item on there. So, provided that this does not involve the erection of a structure, which is not indicated in this application,
Okay.
will not alter the surface configuration.
Okay. Thank you, Derek.
Any other questions for Attorney Galant?
As far as the conditions, um, clearly, um, Mr. Buckland would be amenable to amending, um, sending forth conditions associated with this, um, application as, as, as the board would be comfortable with, as he articulated this evening. So that that would be clear, that were the board inclined to grant the application, that it would be crystal clear in terms of the, the, the conditions associated with, with this application. So, I, I just want to-
Okay. All right. Thank you for your testimony and, uh, application. Speaking to Attorney Galant? Anyone here else that wishes to speak in favor of the applicant? Sir, please come forward. Have a seat, state your name.
Excuse me. My name's Chris Nato. I just wanted to say that, in my understanding, the spirit of the variance is to make sure that if he's running the business, that it's not going to depreciate or alter the nature of the residential neighborhood. And it has been going on for decades. As the appraisal pointed out, there is no, as the appraiser sees, there's no increase or decrease in value of the area. I'm a mortgage lender. I live in the neighborhood. If anyone in the board has driven down there, they've seen Mr. Buckland's property. It is by far one of the nicest properties in the neighborhood. If anything, the way he keeps his property and runs his business, it would, would attract someone to live down there. It is quiet. It's very neat. It's beautifully maintained. I would pay to have him as a neighbor. Honestly, I wish I could swap, to be honest with you, with a couple of my neighbors. And-
Opened idea. I was going to ask your address, but I don't know.
What I'm saying is, is, and so, he keeps everything in a condition that it definitely is not bringing down the value of anyone. If anything, it helps because of how well it's maintained. And also, as far as the special conditions, the lot is set up and such that it is different than many of the lots on there. Most of the waterfront lots are just square rectangle lots and small. His is large enough where, between the driveway and the house and where he operates the business, it is out of sight. And the consistency of vehicles down there are so minimal. I've known him for years, very good friend. He's turned me away. I mean, said, "No, I can't work on your boat. I have one here already. You got to come up Wednesday. I'm sorry." That's, and, I mean, we're good friends, so if that's how he treats me, then that's definitely how he treats everyone else. And if anyone has any question, I suggest taking a random drive-by and just looking for yourself.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anyone else speaking on behalf of this applicant?
Hi, good evening.
Sure. Sir, what was your address?
Seventeen Sunny Ave.
Goffstown, I bet.
Yes.
Sir.
Ryan Bisson, one sixteen Dennis Park Road. I do pay to be his neighbor. Lot. So, uh, pretty much my position is fairly straightforward. I have a bird's eye view of his property, his operation. My second story is 25 feet off the ground, so I see it firsthand every day.
Is yours the house directly across the street from his driveway?
Yeah. That's it. So, um, yeah, it's, it's, it's very professional, very quiet, minimal traffic. It's pretty much what Chris Nato expressed.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
In the back.
My name is Cynthia Ranella, and I'm in favor of Scott.
Could you spell your last name, please?
R U O N A L A. I've been going down to the river ever since I was a child and, um, most of the places there at that time were very campy. And some still are. And I think that what Scott has done on the river has improved everything in the area so that other people want to follow up and improve their properties the way he has. And as far as I know, Scott would never want to contaminate the river in any way. He loves the river. He swims there, his dogs do. And through the floods and so forth, a lot of garbage and huge trees and logs have washed down the river. And Scott is always the person, the only one I know, that cleans that mess up.
Can you, are, do you, are you a resident of Goffstown? Do you live there?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am?
Hi, my name's Vicky Doan, and I live with Scott. Um, I just want to say that we are fanatics about our property. And the allegations that we're contaminating and dumping is, kills me. I am a, like, a recycling Nazi. And as far as if you want to drive up and down the river, and everyone has boats pretty much that lives on the river. So, if you drive by a property, you can see five or six boats, or you can see two boats, or you can see no boats. Some people enjoy it and some people don't. But I just, we, we do care about the look of the river and our home and just the whole residential feel. The noise isn't any louder than kids playing outside, people driving by, people having barbecues. It's just, we are all, we're all neighbors and we all need to get along. So.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Sir, uh, in the back. Anyone standing?
Red Road here again, ninety-five Dennis Park. I just wanted to say that, uh, Dennis Park Road, ever since I lived there, has been a tired road. You mentioned that it's a gravel road. It's only been that way since the water department from Manchester put in a water line.
Okay.
It will be, it's tied down to my driveway right now, and there was, there's an issue there with some ponding. They're going to fix the, do some drainage work there, and then they're going to finish tiring. And all of Dennis Park, right up to Dumont Park, is a tired road.
Okay.
And another thing, I am also a boat owner, and it's also very nice to have someone there that I can go to when I have a problem, or I don't have to load it onto the trailer and take it to Milford or someplace else to have it serviced.
Do you live on the riverside or the?
I live on the riverside.
Can you tell me the size of your property?
It's a-
comparable to, uh, Mr. Buckland?
It's a one hundred deep by two hundred frontage on the, on the river and the road.
Would you say that's smaller than Mr. Buckland's or about the same?
Similar size.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir.
I'm one of the owners of the vehicles drive the amphibian car down Ron Trudo.
Sir, your name is?
Ron Trudo. Here's a picture of it in the water. We were going down, the three of us down the river.
Could you tell me your last name again, please?
Trudo. T R U D E A U. Ronald. I live in Panadville, and I'm always down in and out of the river. And one of our cars, uh, battery went dead, and we were just coasting down the river, you know. And then Scott come out and he's got troubles, he's, yeah. So, he walked into the water. We were going to have to jump out of the car. But he walked in, hooked, there's a hook on the bottom, got his tractor, pulled it out, and put his battery charger on it, and he said, "Go down," you know, with the other two cars down the river. Went down, come out of Kelly Street and come back. He had the car battery all charged up, and we took off from there and no problem. He's really helpful and everything on the water. And like they said, any stumps in the water, you could go tell Scott, and Scott would go over with his fortune boat and go pull the, the stumps out. There's one right in the middle of the lake now. They're going to go get, and I almost hit it with the car, you know, so.
That would be bad.
Yes.
You're hitting a tree. Were you on the land? No, in the water.
No, in the water, yeah. And it's, you know, they're valuable, so when the battery goes out, if they take any water, because it's all electric pumps in it. So, he, you know, we have to go out somewheres, and he was right there and, and everything, you know.
Okay.
He was real helpful. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any else? Sir?
Ron Dachowski, Tony Russell Ave, Lynchville Park in Goffstown. I'm-
Spell the last name.
D A C H O W S K I. And I go to Dunbarton three, four times a week, and I, I, I have, um, the opportunity to go by his house. And I'm just going to say what everybody else did. If he runs, if he runs a business out of there, he's got one of the neatest houses in his neighborhood. The place is spotless. Okay?
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any last comments for the applicant? Okay. Um, anybody against the application? I imagine that attorney's going to speak.
And the boos come from the crowd.
And before you speak, as you get your ready, I'm just going to say that, that we had received a number of emails that were provided through Derek from other supporters, and they may have spoken tonight. I just want to, Paul Gagney of sixty-nine Dennis Park Road, which he did speak.
Paul's not here.
Oh, he did not speak? I thought, I recognize that. That's not true.
Dennis Kaza.
And the, uh, did you say that?
Dennis Kaza. I have a email received today from Dennis Kaza here.
Nope, yep, there it is.
Was in favor of it.
Kevin Miller.
The date, LaBrecque one.
And then the, uh, as Attorney Galant spoke to, there is a petition with a number of signatures on it, likely as high as fifty-seven. Okay? I didn't count. All right.
While we're talking about additional things that you received today, I just have a few pictures and things that I wanted to submit to add to my letter from earlier.
Uh, folks, my name is John Bisson. I represent Frank and Janice Hobbs, who, as you know, are the owners of one nineteen Dennis Park Road. I sent a letter of objection dated April thirtieth, two thousand and ten, and it had attached to it an appraisal opinion from, uh, Mr. Mark McKeon. Frank and Janice Hobbs are direct abutters to the property in question. They own actually three separate residential lots on that street. They are adjacent to Ms. Doan's property, that you heard from her. They're adjacent to Mr. Buckland's property, and they have another residence right up the street. They have significantly improved their residential properties. When you are driving around that neighborhood and noting how neat and clean Mr. Buckland's property is, uh, the Hobbs properties are similarly neat and clean. And when others abandoned the area after the floods, the, um, Hobbs decided to rehabilitate, uh, a number of properties there in that residential area. It has been prime, their primary residence for a long time. And this, as you recall, deals with a business that Mr. Buckland once denied existed. He told your code enforcement officer that he wasn't running a business down there. So consequently, to me, that means he was attempting to hide this business. What he's doing tonight is asking for a variance to make that business legal. And while you heard him talk specifically about the things that he would not do at the property, like, I think he said, engine repair, he would not deal with hazardous waste, he wouldn't do any of the things, some of which I believe he acknowledged before he had done before, like small engine repair. That's not what he's asking to do. He's asking for five variances. There's no limits on what he will be able to do once those variances are approved. According to his request, he wants outdoor storage. It didn't sound to me like he needed it when he said all he does is use the paved area. He wants to do boat repair and service. By definition, under your ordinance, boat repair and service means everything connected to boat repair and service, which would generate hazardous waste. He wants to sell goods, and there's a total of five variances that he's seeking for this residentially zoned property. A variance by definition is an extreme remedy. It's not something that should be granted lightly. And according to your application and according to the law in the state of New Hampshire, it's his burden. He has to persuade you that he has established all of the necessary criteria to support a variance request. One thing that this is not, is it's not a popularity contest. And it's not, um, a statement about whether or not Mr. Buckland is a nice person, or he's not a nice person, or he conducts a good business, or he doesn't conduct a good business. It's the fact that he's looking to conduct business, a commercial enterprise, in a residential zone. There's sixty or fifty signatures on a piece of paper that says they support him. No one is disputing that his property is clean and neat, but he's running a business in a residential zone. And so, he must carry that burden on all of the elements. And it's my view, as I stated in my letter of April thirtieth, that he hasn't carried that burden. He hadn't in his application, and he hasn't by what has been submitted tonight. First, his use of the property as a commercial enterprise will negatively impact property values. You have the opinion of Mark McKeon that I submitted. Mr. McKeon has been an appraiser for thirty-two years, and I heard what the appraiser said tonight. And what I heard him say is, because that business has been there, we can't really determine whether or not it's negatively going to impact property values. Well, the issue isn't that. It's whether or not the existence of a legal business in that property will nega- in that area will negatively impact values. And Mr. McKeon, in his, his opinion letter, is very clear. He states first, that one of the purposes of your ordinance is to prevent harmful encroachment of incompatible uses. That's from section one point three of your ordinance. That means we want to keep businesses separate from residences. And it stands to reason, if you pick the most appealing residential subdivision in Goffstown, think of it in your mind, and stick a auto repair business in there. Or stick a boat repair business in that neighborhood. Or even put a convenience store or a Dunkin' Donuts in that, in that residential neighborhood. Buyers will look at that, and they will say, "I don't want to live next to that property." It will negatively impact values. And significant, we don't even have to go on hypotheticals. The Hobbs had a contract to sell their property at one twenty Dennis Park Road, which is the one that's adjacent to Ms. Doan's property. It's right across the street from Mr. Buckland's. And because of this pending application for this variance, that purchase is on hold. That purchaser, who is the mother of three children, is waiting to see whether or not this commercial enterprise will be authorized to legally exist in that neighborhood. If it gets granted and she walks away, that's perfect evidence of diminution in value. She doesn't want to live there, next to a legally authorized enterprise with no restrictions. The next prong that Mr., um, Buckland must establish is that the granting of the variance must be, must support the public interest. What is the public interest? Is it the popularity contest? Is it whether or not you can get sixty people to sign off on an application? I suggest that it's not. The public interest includes the co-mingling of incompatible uses. That's expressly something that your zoning ordinance suggests we should not do. He said tonight that his business will not generate hazardous waste, that he, he won't do any of those activities. He'll take them off the table. that he, he won't do any of those activities. He'll take them off the table, I think he said. If you look behind the first tab of the documents that I sent you, that's just a page from his website and he talks about his services. He offers a wide range of services, including fiberglass and gel coat repair, color matching, stripping of cosmetics. And I, it sounds to me like they're going to be using a lot of chemicals to do that business. And then he talks about the shrink wrap business. All of those are activities that are incompatible with a residential use. Is that, is allowing that to exist in a residential neighborhood, does that support the public interest? Has he even addressed the criteria in your application that says, when you're in a flood hazard plain, you have to make sure that you aren't adding to the public safety issue? If there's a flood on this property, what's gonna happen if there's hazardous use, hazardous waste on the property? Where's it gonna go? It's gonna go in the river. Is it gonna create a, a bigger hazard than would exist if that property were not allowed to be used this way? He needs to convince you that it will not and I don't believe that he did. The, the issue is that he is asking to make legal what he has done without permission. And that's a significant issue. Because if, if the board suggests that it's okay by granting a variance, then his repeated flaunting of the law by putting this business there and growing this business there, the message is, if you get caught, get a variance. But you don't have to follow the law in the first instance. And I don't think that's something that is supportive of the public interest. If you look briefly behind the second tab, that's a picture of the shoreline of Mr. Buckland's property before this activity. And then behind the third tab, you'll see some of the activity that he's undertaken without the benefit of permits, without appropriate approvals. There's a backhoe in the river, there's the retaining wall that's at issue with the E S. You'll see a photo that shows some discharge into the river. There may be some issue about the sampling. I don't know. I haven't seen the sampling reports. The question is, should this use be allowed to grow and expand in proximity to the river? And I, I would suggest that he hasn't carried his burden on that. The next criteria is that this use would not be contrary to the spirit of the ordinance. What is the spirit of the ordinance? Section one point three again in your ordinance says, we don't want incompatible uses next to each other. That's a fairly strong statement of the spirit of your ordinance. Section fifteen point three of your ordinance, which essentially creates the zoning board of adjustment or, or authorizes it to do what it's doing. The last line of that section says, the Z B A shall not have the power to permit any industrial use in a business district, nor any business use, nor any business use in a residential district unless you can get a variance. That's fine. He's here to get a variance. I understand that. But that's a strong statement that we should discourage business use in a residential district unless you can clearly establish all of the required criteria that are required by law. And I would suggest that he hasn't done that. Granting this variance will not do substantial justice for anyone other than people who want their boats repaired close to the river and Mr. Buckland. The Hobbs, who are direct abutters, do not want a business in the residential zone. He, Mr. Buckland, admitted finally that he was doing this business there without the benefit of the appropriate approvals. And if he gets his variance, then where's the justice? Just do it and eventually you can get your variance. If you do it long enough, it becomes legal. That's not what your ordinance says. The issue of hardship. And, and you asked, you all asked, I believe, appropriate questions on the issue of hardship. The only hardship here is a hardship that Mr. Buckland created. When he purchased this property in nineteen ninety-four, I believe, it was zoned residential. He was aware of the zoning of this property. He conducted his business there at his own risk. He chose to do what he did at that property. No one forced him to. And the critical issue of hardship is that the hardship must arise from a special condition on the land. It must be because of the land. He said he doesn't need the river. His lot is bigger. Bigger than what? It's not bigger than the Hobbs property just up the street. So the size of this lot has, is not a special condition that affects why he needs to conduct his business here. The only reason he needs to conduct his business here is because it's there, because he put it there and he allowed it to grow there. So the hardship is self-created. And under the law of New Hampshire, a self-created hardship is the individual plight of the owner and it's not a basis for a finding of hardship for the purpose of granting a variance. The, the other issue that you, you have to consider when you're looking at how we ended up here is his use of this property and how he's authorized it to grow. I have given you some letters behind the fourth tab, one of which goes back to nineteen ninety-seven from Colas Adams. And Colas Adams is writing about his inspection of the property, the Buckland property. And he talks about Mr. Buckland's blatant violation of the law and his willingness to continue to do so. And Mr. Al, Mr. Adams' final conclusion back then was that there should be considerable effort needed to bring him into compliance and impress upon him what activities are permissible on this frontage and what the penalties are for violations of these rules. That was in nineteen ninety-seven. So he was aware of the limitations of, on this property since then. And he has continued that business and allowed it to grow and do what it is doing now at his own risk. That is not hardship. That is self-created plight. And I would respectfully suggest that under the facts as I see them and has, as they have been presented, there is no hardship here, nor are there any other facts that support a finding on any of the other conditions that are necessary for a variance. And I would urge you to deny his request. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to entertain them. Otherwise, that's all I have to say.
I just have a comment that, that I just would like to make in the end. I think when you initially started your presentation, you said that this was not a popularity contest and that, um, basically you had made that statement. And that, that goes strictly to the fact that you're dealing with people. So therefore, you are now introducing what I would consider to be, if I may say in legal terms, is argumentum ad hominem. And I think when you...
I'm not sure I understand what you mean by that.
What I mean by that is that you have used, I think in your presentation, the final part of your presentation, you are using the argument to the personality of Mr. Buckland and not to the arguments of the property.
No, I think you misunderstood what I said.
Well, I, I don't think I did. And I would respectfully say to you that, um, the presentations need to be about the property. They need to be about the, the river being contaminated. But I will not pay attention to any arguments against Mr. Buckland personally in, in, in this presentation.
The point that I made about the popularity contest is you heard a number of people say that he runs a good business and I don't dispute that. The issue is about the property and that's what I agree with you on.
Right.
Absolutely.
Right.
And if, if you miss, if, if I misspoke, then I apologize. That wasn't my intention. It is about the property. It's not about whether or not people believe this is the best place to have their boat serviced.
Correct. And, um, I will just say to you that how Mr. Buckland responds to issues is his personality. So that to me should not be part of my decision-making on this board. And the decision-making process that I need to, to follow is that which is in the ordinances.
I agree with that.
Which are for the land.
I agree with that entirely.
So I just wanted to make that, that point about any issues that deal with his personality. Now, the question that I have for you, um, when we speak about this business and existing before, and I, I do agree with you that it, it's not necessarily always the good point to have a business exist and then come into the, for a variance after the fact. However, this board has dealt with that issue last year when we had a landscaping company come in. And it was with that situation where we had the exact same scenario. And this board did grant the variance. And I think it puts the board in a very difficult position because it is a livelihood that we're looking at that these, that, that existed there and whether or not the land could take it. But we have dealt with that and you had brought that up as to, as a reason why we possibly should deny that. I just want to let you know that last year, we did have another instance where there was a business that came on before. We had to look at that and the variance was granted.
Can I comment on that? I mean respectfully, the issue is whether or not that applicant established their criteria and established that there was a unique circumstance of the land.
Right.
Which I have heard nothing of from the presentation tonight.
Right. And I, I think that you use it, it was used more in, in an aspect that it wouldn't be prudent of, of the zoning board to, um, grant the variance based upon, um, the fact that it was there before and, and it, and therefore we would necessarily have to grant the variance because it already existed.
Right. My point was that in the application submitted by Mr. Buckland, if you read the analysis about substantial justice and the hardship, it's all about the fact that the business is there and needs to continue because it's his livelihood. And that's why I made that point. The, the application should stand on its own. And it really should have very little to do with whether or not he can, he did this business before. If he can support the variance today because of the five criteria, then you should grant it. I don't believe he has because the hardship and the justice and the substantial, the public interest are all tied into the fact that he, he did this business there and have very little discussion of the land itself.
Another point that you made was the fact that, um, it's a commercial business in a residential area.
Correct.
It is also a commercial business that abuts a river. And it seems to me that a boat business is compatible with that, those vehicles that travel a river. I could, I could understand, I can understand your argument a little, would be a little bit more, um, stronger if Mr. Buckland was putting a car repair business on there. If Mr. Buckland was putting a Dunkin' Donuts on the river because it didn't, it, it wasn't comparable to what the surrounding abutter is, which is the river. So when you talk about it's commercial in a residential area, this type of business is that which the river almost demands, not demands that's there, but, um, is associated with.
Then why is the property along the river zoned residential?
I think it was zoned residential because it was always camps before.
Was, my point is, shouldn't, shouldn't, shouldn't it be rezoned then?
Um, I don't, I don't think we need, yeah, I don't think we need to get into that. I think that's why you have, that's, I think that's why you have a vari-, that's why you can request a variance.
And my second response is, Mr. Buckland himself said he doesn't rely on the river for his business when the chairman asked him the question. He said, no, I don't need to do that. Then he said, well, when people drive by, it's a nice add-on.
Right.
But it's not, you know, it's not what his business is. He relies on people driving their boats up the street and backing them into his driveway. So he's not using the river the way you're suggesting, ma'am.
I think it is, I think he, he, I think he realizes business because he is on the river from it. And he might not need it for the total business, but I think he does realize business because it is a river-related business. As far as the public safety issue that you, that you brought up, I believe the last, in the last go-around that we had, it was brought to our attention that Mr. Buckland helped and received a letter from the Board of Selectmen begging him for helping the fire department rescue people.
What public safety issue did I bring up? What are you referring to? I'm sorry.
You had mentioned a public safety.
Are you speaking to the last time we heard this?
Yes.
Yeah, we don't want to bring those items up.
Well, I, well, they, he brought up the issue of public safety.
Last time.
No, this time.
I don't believe I did.
I believe you did. I wrote it down in my notes and I didn't.
Well, you can let him answer. Did you, did you provide any public safety issues or speak to?
No, the only, I talked about the public interest, which is a requirement of the variance. I don't believe that I did. I, I'm sorry. I, I don't know what you're referring to.
I'd have to go back in a minute, so I'm not gonna do that right now.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm not gonna do that right now, but I did write down public safety issue. I do believe.
Do you have a question about that?
Well, I, I didn't have a question about it. I just had a comment because I did feel that there was, there was a public safety issue which he addressed during the Mother's Day flood. And that, um, perhaps your public safety issue had to deal with the fact that there would be vehicles going down the road. I, I, I don't remember in context what it was about. But I did want to just make a point that he has helped the town with a huge public safety issue when we had the Mother's Day flood. And that probably having, being on a river that has flooding issues, a business like this could be a benefit to the public safety. You stated that the Hobbses had a purchase and sales agreement or have a person who is looking to purchase their home but will not...
120, not their home. It's one of the, they own three properties on the street.
Okay. Who wants to buy that property? And do they have a, a purchase and sale agreement that says that it's conditional as to whether or not this business goes in?
Financing isn't going forward right now, based on this.
And is it in a purchase and sale agreement format with a real estate agent?
I don't know.
Okay.
Can I, I want to just clarify something on that. Now, the purchase and sale, you said it's not going through because of the financing. So it's, the sale is not going through because the mortgage company is maybe not doing something about it, but the property is still desirable to the buyer. They're just possibly having...
No, they're waiting for the, the result of this to see if the...
Who's waiting for the result of this?
The buyer, Julie Haggood.
She's writ-, she's waiting for a result of this to satisfy the mortgage company?
No, to determine if she wants to go forward with the property. The Hobbses aren't gonna force someone to buy the property.
The question was, is that part of the purchase and sale agreement?
A contingency? I don't know.
Okay.
No, at this time, we'll get back to you then.
All set?
I think that's all I have for you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm gonna, do you ask the public safety? Do you, I asked a question before regarding numbers of vehicles and, and roads and do you have any issue? Does your client have any issues with vehicle traffic or?
The road as you know is not good. I mean, it's a tight residential road. It's not designed for large trucks to deliver things. I mean, it's not a great road. That goes to the, the issue of a commercial operation in a residential neighborhood. This, this street is not designed to accommodate commercial traffic in the general sense.
Is the business that was described by Attorney Galant and Mr. Buckland on numbers of boats at any given time, where it was gonna be done, what is and what wasn't gonna do? I know you addressed some of the things that they said that they would do. With the business that they, as they described, is that what you based your objections on? Or was it a, a different characteristic of what you thought the business would be? Did you assume it would be bigger, more frequent use? Did you assume it would be bigger, more frequent use, different activities when you put your objection to this application?
The Hobbeses view is the the way that the op- the business has been conducted there should not be allowed to continue as it was. What you heard tonight, I think, was a more restrictive definition of the activity that has gone on there in the past. And my point was that based on the application, those limits aren't there. So that once this is approved, it becomes a full-fledged boat repair business with no limitations such as no hazardous waste on the site. You can't add pavement or you, you know, you can only use portions of the pavement and no outdoor storage. That's not the application that's here. So my answer is twofold. First, the way the business has been conducted to date should not be allowed to continue because it's incompatible with the neighborhood. And second, the application is far broader than what was described tonight.
And if it was, if the business was conducted as it was described tonight, would your objections still stand?
Yes, because it should not be there. A commercial operation should not be there.
All right, thank you.
Could you tell me when the Hobbeses moved into this area?
Janice Hobbes has lived there off and on her whole life. I mean, you want a specific date when they lived in the neighborhood? I mean, I can ask her. Janice, when did you move in down there? Janice?
In Danus Park, we moved in, I believe it was about nineteen, full-time, nineteen sixty-nine, nineteen sixty-nine.
Is this the first time that they have object objected to this business being there?
Oh, no, no, they they dealt with Ed Nephew before Derek Horn. And that's what finally precipitated Mr. Horn going to the property, the denial that the business was there, the whole history of the other matter. Finally resulted in Derek Horn issuing the cease and desist letter. That's the subject of the other litigation. So this is not the first time they objected. They, we heard tonight that a couple of times, twenty years, he's been there doing this. They they dispute when the business started and we had that whole discussion the last time around. So they complained often. And if you looked through your files, you could see historically letters to Mr. Nephew and then letters to Mr. Horn, and perhaps Mr. Horn could speak to that issue as well.
When, when, just to follow up on it, when the Hobbeses moved there, did Mr. Buckland live there?
No.
Was it Mr. Roy?
I don't know.
Is there a relevant?
Yes, what I'm trying to get to is we have seen a timeline that shows that there has been a motor, not a motor, a boat business there. Whether it be five or six boats or one boat. And Mr. Roy, I believe, was the father-in-law. And we had seen that there were times where it was documented that 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 business was there. So my question would be, did the Hobbeses move into the neighborhood knowing that this boat business existed across the street?
Before we answer that.
We really want to go through that.
Before you answer that, sir.
And I I think I'd have to go back into my notes.
Well, I'm going to make, my point is that we made a decision as a board that we determined that business has not existed since that period of time, the application.
It existed, it just wasn't, it no, it exists, right.
The opinion of the board is, as is documented, that we did not establish, we did not make the point that there is a business. We couldn't determine the business prior, so we won't, we do not want to make a statement on when and, you know, that in nineteen sixty-nine, we believed the business was there. We don't want to do any of that because we made a decision.
We made a decision that it wasn't grandfathered.
But we, we are not going to go beyond that.
But that was, that's that's the question that I would have. That is the question that I have about whether or not, based upon the timelines that we did see.
But but we are not answering that question. You know, we're, that's not the question we're facing with this application is what do we want this property to be as it goes forward?
My comments are that, one, this whole conversation right now is more deliberative than it is public hearing. And I think we need to get on more to the public hearing. I think, two, we need to address the criteria to the variance. And I think we're we're kind of off track on that.
Absolutely. Okay.
Any other questions for me?
Any other questions for, as Gail keeps us on track? Very appropriate. Any questions for Attorney Bissen? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is this an appropriate point for a five minute?
No, I think it's very appropriate because I think we still have a few minutes yet. And we're going to take, come back.
Is five enough? We do ten?
Five or ten.
Let's do a ten-minute break, come back, come back at nine twenty-five. Well, stand up. So we were going to return and we had just heard from Attorney Bissen. And we are going to ask if there is any other butters or people speaking on against this application. Any at all? Please come forward, have a seat, please state your name.
Hi, my name is Frank T. Hobbs. I'm the oldest son of Frank and Janice Hobbs. You guys getting tired yet?
Oh, we're good. This is routine.
This is pretty early for us.
Night owls. I've, I was pretty much born on the river, nineteen sixty-eight, grew up down there for years. The the first people I remember down there were the Berries. It was a little camp, little red camp. They had a little boat with oars and there was, you know, for as long as I can remember, there was, there was no business down there for years. It's always been residential. And I keep hearing the twenty-year business, the twenty-year business, and, you know, the house that was built twenty years ago. See, I don't get that. It was my understanding the property was purchased in ninety-four, ninety-five. And I I've been down there every year my entire life. My parents have lived down there. My brothers lived down there. I'm very aware of what happens down there. I just don't see how a business can be twenty years old if didn't change hands until fifteen some odd years, or thirteen, fourteen years. Someone mentioned the paved area within a hundred feet of the water. That's was my understanding. That was protected wetlands. That in and of itself should be enough to disqualify that. I've noticed also on the website, this is a full-service marina. It doesn't say an internet business. It doesn't say, you know, we're just going to fix heater cores, full service. And that's a concern. I'm I'm down there. My kids are down there, friends. We have spent countless hours down there barbecuing, swimming. And I've also heard that about this being a sole source of income and a livelihood. I understand that because I I make a livelihood too and I have, I have a family to take care of. But I I also know that I've I've heard that this was the sole source of income for twenty years, which I didn't understand the twenty. But I do know, I met Mr. Buckland when he worked for my friend Sonny at Martel Racing in the late eighties, full-time. The reason why I know this is he also worked on my car and repaired an axle in my Acura. So the twenty years of the sole source of income, I don't understand it because I remember him working there full-time. From there, I remember him also working for Mike's Imports, my uncle Mike Hobbs, late eighty, or late nineties as well. So that doesn't make a lot of sense to me. Full-time mechanic, full-time. And I visited, Sonny was my best friend in the world. I was there many, many times. Mike was, and he still is, he's my uncle, Sonny passed on. Mike was the best man at my wedding. I know Mike real well.
Mr. Hobbes, I'm going to try to keep you on track. What we're trying to discuss, determine is whether or not this should be approved as a business to be on this property.
Okay. My 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 thoughts are absolutely, absolutely no. Someone mentioned it's a livelihood. Well, it's also a neighborhood. And it's a neighborhood that there are families and it's it's owned that way for a reason. And I think it would be not a good idea at all if it were granted. Thank you.
Just a couple of questions.
Sure.
Did you say you grew up, lived in in this Danus Park area?
Yes.
Are you, when is the last time you lived in that area?
The last time I lived, we had moved from from Danus Park around the age of thirteen. We maintain, the the property was, had always been my parents', so we had always, we could always go down and and be there or go boating or something. But I didn't, I lived there until, I think it was thirteen years old.
Do you believe, do you believe, just on your recollection, that the residential characteristics of the neighborhood of? Do you believe, just on your recollection, that the residential characteristics of the neighborhood have changed over the years from when you lived there to, to now?
I mean, apart from seeing the Snap-on tool truck in, you know, Mr. Buckland's yard and some other things, it's, it's resident, everywhere's residential. There are no businesses. There, there really never were. My brother also moved in to the place with his wife and started raising a family years after, so I, obviously I was down there a lot. But yeah, this has always been, has always been residential.
When did your brother move in?
My brother moved in, let's see, on or about, this is an educated guess, but I would say somewhere around ninety, mid to late nineties. I could be off a few years, but yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else here speaking? Yes, against?
My name is Deb Godette. I live at one forty-two Danus Park. I moved into Danus Park in nineteen ninety-six. I, at the time, I was married. Since then, I, I've been a single mother for the last eight years. I, I moved into this neighborhood because I thought it was a safe place for my kids and I thought that it was a residential neighborhood. My, I have a lot of concerns because a lot of questions that I have, has nothing to do with the Hobbs, has nothing to do with Scott. Has, I have a lot of concerns about, I heard the first argument, the first thing that came up tonight, is concern about silt in the river, okay? I have concerns about the, the water quality of the river and we seem to be having problems according to the DES. I have a problem with that and I, and I don't know who's monitoring that and I'd like to know who's monitoring that. That's number one. I have, I, I have nothing against Scott Buckland's property. He has the most beautiful property in the park, the envy of everybody. Mine's a disgrace in comparison. However, my concern is, I, I, I'm concerned for the kids and the wildlife in the neighborhood and that's why I'm here speaking. There is a lot of traffic from tractor, trailer trucks and large vehicles. I'm not talking about the boats, I'm not talking about the cars. Because yes, there is a lot of that traffic as well. I'm talking about the large delivery trucks and the tractor-trailer trucks that go down and come down my end and rip down the wires consistently. I'm home all day long during the day. I know what there is for traffic during the day. I have a problem with, I wanna know what the discharge coming from between the two properties is. It's disgusting looking, it's brown, it's globby looking. I'm concerned because we now have mill foil in the river.
Do you believe that this business has existed or would exist, contributes to this or causes it?
It is my concern that it, if it is not, that it may. I have concerns. I'm being told now that there's not going to be any chemicals and et cetera, et cetera. But I've seen boats being washed with gloves. That indicates to me that there's caustic chemicals being used and I'm concerned about that being in my river. My children swim there, they boat there. We had an eagle yesterday fly down the river. We have a pair of ospreys nesting on the opposite side of the river. Look what's happening in Louisiana. There's dead fish everywhere, the animals are eating the dead fish and they're dying. What's to say we're not gonna have that same kind of problem if it's not monitored what's going into that river, no matter who's doing it?
And so, you, you think this business?
I think that there's not enough monitoring and there's not enough, enough paying attention to what's actually going on down there. And I'm not talking about with just Mr. Buckland. So that if this is going, if you guys are going to give him this variance, then I wanna know what kind of monitoring there's going to be. Because I'm, I'm the mother with the kids with the ear infections and symptoms that assimilate some of the, the symptoms of Lyme disease. I can show you my kids' doctor's records. We've had some of these problems.
Deb, not to interrupt you, but I,
That's fine.
I might, I, I think the monitoring aspect comes from the Department of Environmental Services.
Okay, and as far as I'm hearing, we're not having any resolution to that right now. So, I'm, I'm asking you that if you're gonna do this, I expect that there's going to be some sort of monitoring and some sort of paying attention to, to what activities are contributing to this on the river. And for, I mean, anybody who's,
I do feel, I think that, that when we mentioned to you that there is correspondence that has gone on, and I believe that I was the one that, that mentioned that the Department of Environmental Services. And I am, I will say that I think very much along your lines in that we do not want, and we should not accept anything that would adversely affect the environment or the environment, the flora, the fauna in that area because it, it, it is priceless. But I do wanna say that there is a letter that we did get tonight from one of the attorneys that is part of public record, will be part of public record in, in it, which does say that the Department of Environmental Services has addressed the issues that you're speaking of. And I'll, I'll just leave it to you that it, that it is up there. I'll be glad to share mine with you if you'd like to see it too.
I'd very much like to read that, in fact, when I'm done.
Okay.
I just feel that we pay a lot of taxes down there. I bought my house and I, I have no problem paying my taxes and things if I'm being protected. If I'm simply buying into being okay with this because it's someone else's business, well, I'm not okay with that. I bought this house for my kids. I'd like to be able to leave it to my kids. No one even wants to be in the river when you look at some of the, some of the water tests. That concerns me. They weren't always like that. We've been having the water tested every year. Something's changing. What is it?
Okay. Yeah, I think you've made your point on that. Can, you're on one twenty-two Danus Park, is that what you said?
One forty-two.
One forty-two?
Yep, and I've been there for fourteen years. And when I moved in, I, granted, I cannot see his boats and the boats that he's working on. I don't have a problem with that. I don't have a problem with what's in his yard. What I have a problem with is what's coming out of that pipe and what the results of that are, which it doesn't seem to me we've found out yet. And like I said, chemicals, because obviously in the past they've been used in a business that wasn't there, was there, wasn't there, was there, whatever. It's just, there's a lot of unanswered questions for me as a homeowner and a, and a single mother. And I know that I have, there are other single mothers on the river who are just as concerned as I am, but don't feel that they can come here and speak because they're intimidated.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Yes.
Are you on the water or not?
I'm across the street from the water, yes, sir.
How large is your lot in?
I have an acre and a half.
Is that, do you think, the same size or approximate size of?
Mine's all woods and swampy. It's, his is more of a clear, open spot. It's hard to tell. I, I honestly can't tell you. I mean, mine's kinda laid out more like a triangle than a rectangle and, so I, I don't know, footage-wise, I don't know.
We received, we, we mentioned this packet earlier that, that, that the town received on May third that has some things in it. Can we ask if this is from you, this packet?
This is not from me, no, no.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Sir, in the back, back up.
Ray Rodier again, ninety-five Danus Park. The lawyer that was here previous, before the break, was talking about flooding and hazardous waste. My concerns are more of the septic systems that everybody owns and, and has on their properties. And every time there's a Mother's Day flood, these septic systems are inundated and all that stuff goes into the river, goes down, goes out to the ocean. Nobody seems to be concerned about that. I can't, I, so anything, until septic systems are, are dealt with, hazardous waste should be a moot point.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you. Sir? Didn't force you to come up, but I knew I saw your hand to be a.
My name's Robert Morris. I live on Cove Street. Until last week, didn't know the Hobbs, didn't know they existed, didn't know Mr. Buckland existed, didn't know this marina, this boat service, whatever it is, existed. I don't drive down Danus Road. I don't really care what it looks like. I don't really care. The people are nice, not nice, get along, don't get along. I did, however, purchase my property primarily for the recreational value of this waterway. The comment was made earlier that a boat service center, whatever it is, again, suits a river background or a water setting. But does this specific waterway and the size of it suit a marina or whatever this is or any other sort of commercial endeavor? I don't know, an alligator ranch or something along those lines, just because it's a waterway? I'm not in the position as a homeowner and as a family father, whatever, to monitor what goes on that water, on that waterway. I rely on this committee, on this board for that oversight and to protect my investment and my family's health.
Okay.
And that's all I have to say.
All right, thanks. Anyone else? Speaking against the application? Dirk, I'm gonna ask, we received this packet yesterday that, that Kathy referenced earlier, but we don't, it seemed to have the source of it.
April twentieth, it says, Dear Butter.
So, how do we take something that's, unless someone wants to speak to it?
It's, it's part of the record. It's, it's a governmental record that's been received by the town.
The name doesn't have to be associated with the speaker.
No, you can, I guess, give whatever weight you seek that.
Okay. All right, so we do have that. It consists of a notification to no butter. It has a letter that looks to have been to Mr. Buckland from a New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services on January fifteenth of two thousand and ten. An email. Information on symptoms of Spiroitis Disease. One photo. It looks to be a screen print of the Grand State Dr. Marine.
Yeah, the website page.
Website.
It's actually the same things that were in the package that the attorney gave us.
Okay, and some other yellow pages and then some, like four paragraphs of information here too.
I believe, or not that last sheet with the four paragraphs of information, those are excerpts from the thing that was mentioned before, the letter from Colas Adams. I recognize the same material there.
For who?
Colas Adams Wetlands Bureau, D E S. There was a letter, there's another letter that's part of the record.
Okay, good.
Here, that's material that's excerpted from that, which, just another point too. I believe this email that was given, it was from Mr. Henderson, speaks to the highlighted thing on the second page there regarding the investigation of discharges.
Yeah, this is the letter that Attorney Galant spoke to, I think, when we, when Kathy asked that question. This, this email?
Yes.
That's the what, this is just a copy of what you received?
That's a copy that the attorney gave me when I questioned the, what, the D E S in responses, January fifteenth letter that was received in the anonymous package.
Okay. Let's see, make sure we just addressed everything we had here before we go back to Attorney Galant.
Would it make a difference to anybody if we did know who sent this anonymous package?
As Dirk said, I mean, well, I'll say that they had the opportunity to come and speak to it.
Because it's possible we could match this, some of the printing and writing with other stuff we've received.
No.
I'm just saying, is that of any?
I don't think Goffstown has a CSI.
We're starting one. We're on TV, we might as well go.
My thought is if they don't wanna put their name to it,
Yes.
they get whatever weight we decide to give it.
Let's see, so we've addressed all the correspondence yet? Just to, just to point out before, again, this is before we go back to Attorney Galant, that the planning board voted seven to zero to zero to provide no comment to this ZBA application. It was not forwarded to Conservation Commission because it did not involve a variance request from a wetland sit-back. Let's see, talks about site plan, talks about the proposed use to be limited to repair and servicing of boats as presented in the application. Dirk points out that, and that was what was noticed to the public. Butters have been notified, notice has been put in the paper, that we've also received these things, we've spoken to them. Okay, any questions or issues before we go back to give the opportunity to Attorney Galant?
I have a question for Mr. Buckland.
Sure.
Can I make one more comment?
Not at this point. We'll get back to you.
Okay.
Hold on. We're gonna try to maintain a process here.
Probably a real quick one, Mr. Buckland, but in, in the photograph on the front of the overview and request here.
I'm not sure which photograph you're talking about.
Just an aerial view of the property.
Okay.
Of the boats in the yard, how many are yours?
I'm gonna say there's three boats in the yard, one is mine, the one in the blue shrink wrap.
The one in the blue shrink wrap is yours.
Rather large.
Okay, and normally, how many personally-owned boats are in the yard?
I have two. One seasonal, one comes home for the winter time, rest of the time it's down the beach.
I see.
And one I use for the, the river itself.
So generally, there don't be no more than two of your own?
I do have a small jet ski too, so technically I guess you could say three. But they usually sit out in the water during the summer months, spring, summer, fall. Can I maybe clarify one or two things?
It's gonna be you and Attorney Galant. It's back to you again. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, are interested parties getting an opportunity to speak tonight or is it just rebuttal and?
Oh, boy, I think, I thought I asked that, but.
I only heard your request against or for, I did not hear interested parties.
Okay. Let's, sure, before we go to, back to Attorney Galant, because we wanna hear, he wants to hear everything that, so that he can speak to that. So, please come forward, state your name. I apologize that I didn't get to interested parties.
It's fine.
My name's Matt Fuleat. I live at thirty-five Cove Street in Goffstown. As an interested party, I'm not in the immediate neighborhood, but I am downriver from the subject property. Couple of things I have questions on that, that over the course of the night haven't been answered and I hopefully will be able to get those answered, is the boat repair business, exactly what type of chemicals, if any, are allowed to be used? I myself have a family, many of my neighbors do as well. My wife is expecting in December and, and non-organic banana is bad for, let alone anything that they throw in the river, according to her. So that's, that's a primary concern of mine. I'd like to know, even if it's just water and you're getting foreign boats from other waterways and other bodies of water here, if he's just rinsing the boats off, I've heard that's a main way of mill foil infiltrating the riverway. Is, is there any way to mitigate that? And from what I've seen on the property, there's no, it, it is paved all the way down to the water. It's very nice. I mean, I wish I could get that done on my property, but I unfortunately cannot. What, if anything, is to keep any of this rinse water or any of these chemicals from just depositing right in the river?
Okay. Do you think that he, as a business owner, would have more stringent requirements than any other homeowner who lives along the river or people who use it recreationally? You think that is a requirement or that we should levy on him?
I mean, that would be nice, but I don't see any way of keeping that enforceable, especially with just, are you gonna inspect every single boat for a seed of mill foil that he's gonna rinse off with water? I mean, that's my main question.
Do you have a preference on whether or not he should or should not be allowed to have this business?
If, as it stands right now with the information I have, I'd prefer he had not. I, I, I do own riverfront property. My driveway's, I've, I've seen his driveway and his property compared it to mine. My driveway's bigger. My property's bigger. What's to keep me from applying for this variance?
And you said you're a Goffstown resident?
Yes.
Would you, would you feel more comfortable if there was some type of a drainage system that was explored that would protect the river from mill foil coming off of other, other boats as well as other chemicals?
Yeah, absolutely. That would make me feel better. As long as the drainage system is sufficient. If it's not sufficient, I can see, and again, I, I purchased my house less than five years ago. I didn't know the business existed. If I had, it would have given me pause when I purchased my house and that speaks to property value, I think. If I'm looking to purchase a home, I may have offered less. I may have thought twice considering I was planning on having a family. It's, it's really something I can't put myself in that position because I didn't have that opportunity to know at that point, which apparently this business was operating at that point. Had I known, it, it may have been a different story in terms of me buying. Had I known, it may have been a different story in terms of me buying my house. And for me to feel safe about that, especially with expecting, you know, a new child and having a pregnant wife, it would have to be, and you know, you put little plugs on all your outlets, you, you do the nesting thing, you worry about everything in your house. So I can only picture toxic chemicals or any kind of milfoil contaminant in the lake, it would have to be an unbelievable kind of drainage system. That would, that would need to be, I'd hope, inspected by at least somebody other than the homeowner.
Where is the milfoil problem right now?
They're dealing with it at Nemaski Lake.
It is right.
Right, and that was voted on town...
That's, that's where my property butts.
You said your property butts what?
Nemaski Lake, downriver.
Nemaski Lake, oh, it's not the Piscataqua?
It's the Piscataqua, but it's...
But it turns into a bubble.
It depends on who you ask.
Okay.
And, and in all fairness to the situation, I do believe the milfoil, they, they think possibly has come in from the public boat ramps.
They think it may have, they're not, they're not sure.
Yeah.
They think it, they think it may have had to do with the flooding on, on Mother's Day three or four years ago. They're, they're not positive either, but I'd hate to have it eradicated and pay all the taxes to do so, just to have this business reintroduce it into the river.
Right.
Okay. Thank you so much for coming up. Again, I apologize that I didn't get you as an interested party. Normally, I guess I assume interested parties either have an opinion on for or against, and that's when they usually come up.
I'm still on the fence.
Okay. Are you for or against here?
I could just clear up the milfoil question.
Well, I don't know if we need to answer the milfoil question, actually. Sir, are you against or ask your...
Actually, I'd like to speak for.
Okay, well, I want to go back to, did I give you an opportunity before? Is that a problem?
No, new face.
Or you're a new face?
Yeah.
Come on up. Please state your opinion.
Paul Roy, Adrian Roy's son. I was probably, myself and my sisters are probably responsible for him not getting the grandfathering. And like I had said when I came in then, it didn't concern me, one way or the other, how the board ruled at that point. It was to clear my father's name. I can tell you that since Scott has been down on the river, early nineties, he has operated a business down there. I can tell you that when my father combined the three lots into one, that's probably one of, if not the biggest lot on the river now. I hadn't been down there in a long time for personal reasons. I had a hard time going down there because that was where we went, you know, with my father and, well, I went down a few weeks ago. And I was actually surprised. That has to be probably the best looking place on the river. I mean, it's gorgeous, far cry from the two shacks that were there at one point. I mean, I went down when Scott was still married to my sister, but the house was brand new. But he's done a lot since then. And this, I do know that it is his livelihood. And like I had told him, my intent when I came in under the grandfathering thing was not to kill his business, but to, to say that my father didn't have a business down there, you know, going back. I know I made some allies doing that. I've probably just turned them into enemies. But what's right is right, and I felt it important that I come in front of the board and to tell you, you know, that he's, he's been down there since the early nineties. I know he's been operating his business since then. I know the place is, is beautiful. You wouldn't know, except for the, seeing the boats parked there, that there is a business there.
Okay. All right, thank you for coming up.
So is he a favor?
Yes. Is there anybody I missed before? Sir, can I ask what your, come on up and ask what your position or point is?
Okay. Ray Rodeo here again, ninety-five, Dana Spark. I'd like to talk about this anonymous booklet here that nobody's taken.
Is it yours?
No, it's not.
Then I prefer that it be left as is.
But what is, what is this question for?
Is it a question or are you speaking to it?
No, my, my point is it shouldn't be even entered into evidence or any decisions because there's no name to it.
It is been provided to the town, so it is going to be in the record.
It shouldn't be, unless there's a name attached to it, so we all know who wrote it.
And we don't, we do not require that.
Really? How can you make a decision using that if you don't know who it's from?
Uh, we're going to, it's going to be in the record, yes. All right, ready? Attorney Gallant?
Could he take this, he was speaking before I...
Take your stand. It's not, yeah, it's, it's up to you, so...
It would save me some time.
Absolutely.
A, a couple of things I'd like to address. I'd like to talk about the milfoil for about two seconds.
Okay.
Every boat that I work on, I've been doing this a long time, my whole life. I look at each boat that comes in, my piece of property, four milfoil, just to make sure there's no contamination on it, so I can tell my customers, hey, you've got a problem, be careful, we take this stuff off. It's very easy to spot, it sticks out like a sore thumb, and so I'm doing that part. I'm actually making it safer for some of the other bodies of water around here not to get this stuff. We're talking about uniqueness of the property. My property's very unique. There's nothing around here like it. My driveway's very wide, it's very long. When the driveway goes in, it splits off, so there's parking on this side, there's parking on this side. And there was a little confusion about when you asked if I use the water for repair or not. I don't actually fix boats in the water, but I do use the water to take a test drive. Customers' boat comes in and it's running poorly, I'll take, I'll put it in the water and I'll take that boat for a ride. Sometimes that's the only way to determine what's actually wrong with the boat. And I think that's also providing a, a safety issue for other people. Who wants to take their family out in a boat that's running poorly or that's, that's running poorly? You're just, you're, it's cleaning the environment by keeping up on this stuff and maintaining it properly. And I think the, the biggest part is probably having access to the water. And if somebody has a problem on the water, me having a piece of property like that, the property's, like Paul was saying, it's probably one of the largest pieces of property down there. And over the past twenty years, I've made this more accessible to do this. There's very few pieces of property to have paved boat ramps that go down right to the water. I was lucky enough to be able to do that within the timeline. The D E S doesn't have a problem with it. This water pipe keeps getting brought up about we're dumping stuff in the water. Never happens. It's an irrigation pump. The D E S has come down and inspected this pipe. It's an irrigation pump. The D E S told us that we could pull twenty thousand gallons of water a day use of this pump to pull, pull water out. We pull a couple of hundred gallons. It's for my irrigation for my lawn and my garden. We've never used any harsh chemicals anywhere near the water. I never have and I never will. I swim in this water on a daily basis in the summertime. I've got numerous friends and other family members that live down on the water. Nobody wants to swim in that. So the people who make these accusations are foolish. This is ridiculous.
A question back on the property, you talked about you having a paved driveway in a paved ramp. Are, are your neighbors able to put paved ramps into the, into the water?
No. No.
Why's that?
Because of the Shoreland Protection Act. That's never going to happen again.
Is there other people in Dennis Park that have driveways into the river?
Not that I know of. And I've got a very large paved area for storage of boats. And when I say storage, I don't mean long-term storage. I'm talking a day or two, well, these things are here. I've never had a boat there more than, but a few days. So we're not talking long-term storage. Usually it's when I, I have a boat come in, somebody orders a part for it, wait for the part to be delivered. There's very small delivery trucks. Most of the stuff comes in UPS, so we're not getting big giant commercial trucks packing in. The biggest truck that comes in is a Morgan recreational truck, which is about the size of a UPS truck or a furniture delivery truck, probably a smaller version of that. And that's about it. But the property is very unique. I know you've, you've asked that question a couple times.
It's a critical one.
I just wanted to clarify.
And I have a follow-up question on it.
Okay.
So because of the Shoreland Protection Act, other, your neighbors can't put paved ramps in?
Never happened.
If yours were to degrade over, over, in twenty years, under the Shoreland Protection Act, are you able to replace it?
I don't know. I don't know. If it's maintained, it shouldn't deteriorate over...
I'm just, I'm just, you know, hypothesizing, you know, is it something that, you know, that if, you know, in twenty years from now it degrades, you can't use it anymore, you can't put a new one in, you know, what do you do with your business? You know, it's just a serious question.
On the same lines of the existing tire wall that was there. I think if it's replaced in kind, they'll let you do something with it. They probably would never let me repave, but I could probably pull that out and put granite.
And I'm not going to hold you to the expertise on that, you know, whether you can or not, but I was just, I'm asking the question if you knew that or not.
Okay. I hope, I hope I helped clarify some of these issues. You did.
Any other questions?
Yeah, no. If a restriction is put on here where engine maintenance can't be performed, I'm stating if, are you willing to accept that? Because in one statement you said you're not doing engine maintenance anymore, and you just made a statement that said, well, if somebody comes along and their boat's not running right, it behooves me to say, you know, I'll work on the engine and see if I can get it running right.
I think you have to clarify that. A lot of, most of the problems that I deal with, electronic issues. A stator goes bad, a ignition control module goes bad. Engine maintenance, sure. I change a lot of water impellers. A water impeller is basically a water pump that circulates water through the engine to cool it. So there's, there's a lot of things you can do and there's a lot of things I won't do. Does that help clarify?
Yeah.
You know, there's, there's a lot of things that, sure, I could see there could be issues, fuel and oil and stuff like that, but if we take that off the table and stay away from that stuff, I can still make a living at this. I think I do more of that stuff now than I probably ever have.
I do have another question. Granite State, what is the title of that business? Granite State?
Dock and Marine.
Dock and Marine.
And it's...
Which business is that?
That's two, that's the internet sales. That has nothing to do with what we're talking about here today. It keeps getting brought up.
What is that business?
That is a mobile marine service and dock sales.
Okay.
Is any of the work that's mentioned on that webpage which was brought up before, gel cleaning and whatever, is any of that done on-site or is that all done mobile?
It's all done mobile. That has nothing to do with my piece of property. The only thing that has to do with my, that piece of property is my office.
Any other questions? Mr. Buckland?
I, I, about the, this pavement issue that you bring up, when I go back to what you, you referred to on page eighty-three, thirteen, three, six, one, it does say, you know, that such use does not involve the erection of a structure and will not office, alter the surface configuration of the land. Does that speak to pavement?
It would, it would if that pavement was not in place prior to the surface water setback being enacted in March of two thousand and eight.
So we, okay, so what you, okay.
Before March two thousand and eight, this property was not within the wetland district.
Correct.
In March two thousand and eight, the planning board added the hundred-foot setback from surface water. At that point, this property became part of the wetland and surface water conservation district.
So surface configuration of the land speaks to paving?
Or general grading, you know, changing the grade of land.
If I push, if I push it just a little bit more, if, if you, if you wanted to pave and you didn't alter the, the slope or the configuration of the land, is, is that a stretch?
Maybe, because right above that, you see a thirteen point three point six, you could argue that, that would contaminate surface or groundwater. Because if you were going to pave an area that's not paved, you'd have more runoff. I mean, I, I don't, I don't know what you're getting at.
I was just trying to get a feel for that.
Draw the line on what could.
Whether, whether other people could or could not put in a paved driveway down to the water.
I think the more restrictive is going to be the Shoreland Protection Act, to be honest with you.
Okay.
If you were paving over gravel, I think you would be altering the surface.
Right.
So as it deteriorates, if it should, as it deteriorates, I don't think you could put asphalt back because you'd be adding oil.
I, I wasn't speaking to his particular situation. I was speaking to the question as to whether other neighbors could possibly...
Oh, yeah, no, I know what you're saying. And I think the more, the more restrictive is going to be Shoreland Protection.
Reduction. I just wanted some clarity on that issue.
Okay. Would, would there be? Would you object to a restriction of installing some type of drainage system to protect any accidental?
In twenty years, I've never had any sort of accident. If, if we're not dealing with...
As I've never crashed an airplane either.
But, but if we're, if we're not dealing with, if we're not dealing with chemicals and engine and oil, and oil and fuel, what else are we going to trap?
That's just it, there, there, you have a boat in the yard that maybe you're doing electronic repairs on, it's got an engine on it, and it may have an oil leak, and then a rain comes along and that oil runs down and into the water.
I think there's barriers and stuff like that, that you can use absorbent pads and stuff like that would probably be a lot more efficient than a drain, I don't think, that would be allowed to put a drain, because now you're altering the surface again.
Yeah, let's, let's try to stick to the criteria here. We need to answer those five criteria first, so before we start applying, business...
Does that, does, does the paved area slope downwards into the river or does it go flat or does it go up? Is there, is there any contour to the pavement?
Yeah, it's a little, it's a little split. The, from the gate area pitches towards the street and the, where I work, kind of pitches towards the grass and the lawn area, and a small section of it pitches towards the water, very small.
So that's, okay. So most of your pitch goes away from the river, not towards it?
Correct. Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just wanted to speak to the board here. We're at ten oh seven. Any inclination on how late we want to go tonight before we continue this?
Yeah. If I could.
I've got a five AM launch tomorrow morning, so...
My concern is that we got a lot of information at the eleventh hour, even information that was brought here today. And we have a policy, so to speak, that says that if information isn't provided, is it four business days, five business days before the meeting, that we don't have to deliberate or that we can postpone deliberations. And that's what I'm going to suggest, because even just the package that Mr...
Bison?
Yes, presented. Yes, Attorney Bison, Bison presented tonight. That was very much last minute, and I want to have a chance to digest these things before we, so I, I would say we go and close the hearing.
No.
But I'd say close the hearing and just deliberate next month at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, got your opinion?
Okay, my opinion is that we do not close the hearing because I think it's important the public gets to look at that information that was given to us at the eleventh hour. And if they still have some concerns, we should still entertain that, 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 that public comment.
Okay.
You're right. I, I have to agree. I forgot about that part. The public may have comments on it as well.
Ed Orland, any...
I agree with Kathy.
Don't sound so, so... Don't sound so, so.
Turn against whoever, whatever we are.
Or you.
I was hoping to wrap this up, but no, I agree with you.
Do we want to continue? How late tonight?
Ten thirty.
Yeah.
I agree.
Okay, so we're going to go until we're hit to ten thirty. Attorney?
So my challenge is I've got to be done by ten thirty.
Well, it's you, then we're going to go back to the other side as well, so.
Okay. I'm going to try my level best. Allah was brought out, especially in terms of additional material that I hadn't seen before tonight. But anyway, let me try to address some of these points. In some of the comments, the opening comments, as far as the nature of the business and being concerned about the fact that residential area and some reference was made to Dunkin' Donuts, Hodor Field, this, all those things are hyperbole as far as I'm concerned. There's absolutely nothing to do with this proceeding. I'm a little concerned about not only the tardiness of some of these materials, but also, not a little, a lot, reference to one twenty Dennis Park Road across the street and the fact of the assertion being made that somehow this property is under some purchase and sales agreement and that the buyer supposedly has some concerns because of the fact that it's pending before this board a variance application. There's been no documentation submitted as to that assertion, no statement, no copy of the purchase and sales agreement reference was made as to whether or not there's any conditions in the PNS. There are none. According to Attorney Bissen, the only one was a financing contingency.
Do you believe it is not true?
I, not only do I, well, I'm not going to dis, I'm not going to take issue with Mr. Bissen's character. I'm not going to do that whatsoever. What I do know is this, that one twenty Dennis Park Road and the abutting property, which is, I believe, one eighteen? Which is owned by Ms. Doan, which, as she testified, she resides with Mr. Buckland, is the prop, is the subject of a boundary line dispute, and has been for some time. And I also understand, and I know for a fact, that there's been a boundary line agreement plan proposed that was done by a local surveyor that calls for the possibility of the parties entering into some kind of an agreement to deal with this purported dispute. I'm not going to get into that. That's not before this board. I can envision a situation perhaps whereby in the course of disclosure, perhaps there was some reference to the fact that there's some boundary line issue, there's a recorded plan that was done by a surveyor on behalf of Ms. Doan. Help me with the name of the surveyor.
You just said it wasn't relevant.
Well, there was, there was a Donald Duval that was retained by Ms. Doan that actually did a survey and was put to record. The Hobbs had a survey done by another surveyor that called in to question the veracity of Mr., some of the issues or information on Mr. Duval's plan. The point is this, I can see that perhaps there's been some discussion about a boundary line dispute, but I can't, as far as the assertion relative to this proceeding. They come in with a packet with four tabs with documentation that goes back to nineteen ninety-seven, mysterious information that's dropped and however it got here, but yet this thing, this very crucial thing, this very crucial piece of information, I see nothing. The issue about public safety, I believe you had made reference to that. I believe Mr. Bissen did talk about public safety. As a matter of fact, it's addressed within the first section of his, his materials. The first line within section one, that the requested variances would result in a diminution of value, he starts with the Dennis Park neighborhood was recently decimated by severe flooding in two thousand six and two thousand seven. I believe that's what you're referring to. The item to which you mentioned, although it was in the context of the application, or the, the application as it relates to the decision by Mr. Horn dated June eleventh of oh nine, the grandfathering use issue, there was material issued by the town, the selectmen commending Mr. Buckland for the assistance to the fire department during the flood. So I think that's what you're referring to. I've heard assertion about, about the longevity of, of, of Mrs. Hobbs residing in the property. I don't want to get into semantics. I would only represent to you that according to Mr. Buckland, the Hobbs have lived here full-time for some six or seven years, to the best of his knowledge. To the best of his knowledge, for a period of about twenty years before that, that property was rented supposedly on a full-time basis by somebody by the name of James Kelly. So it's Mr. Buckland's recollection that for a good period of time, that property was not even occupied by Mr. and Mrs. Hobbs. It was rented out to a third party. In terms of the, in terms of the content of the materials that were submitted, I, I'm, I'm not going to get into assertions about widely reported clashes with the Buckland over the years. I don't think it means anything. I think the, the, the issue about, within section one of the material that was submitted on behalf of the Hobbs, objection about there would be a diminution in value in support of that assertion is a letter from McKeon Appraisal Services, Mark McKeon. There is no reference of any detail in terms of the substance of this letter. I'd like to take a couple of minutes and go very quickly in terms of the way I read this letter. First off, the first paragraph indicates, this, this first paragraph, the last sentence identifies the issue. The issue you have asked me to consider is whether the operation of Mr. Buckland's proposed business will have any negative impact on the value of the Hobbs property at one nineteen Dennis Park or any of the other Hobbs property in the immediate vicinity of one fifteen Dennis Park Road. Now, he goes on to say that he did not see any signs of commercial usage on the Dennis Park Road or in the immediate area. Now, I find it interesting that he makes the observation in his report, it's their appraiser, that says that based upon what he can see, he sees no evidence of commercial value, of commercial activity. He goes on to say that the sections that he understands to be at issue, he includes section two point three point four, and he puts in bold print, it further designates uses that are quote, "not permitted." Among the uses not permitted, open print, section two, number sign two, close print, are motor vehicle repair, service, and towing, including bodywork. We're not, that, that, those types of services aren't in any way, shape, or form a part of this application. He goes on, in terms of the second page, the first full paragraph, he indicates that it's been this appraiser's observation during thirty-two years in the real estate field that prospective purchases of single-family residents pay particular attention to surrounding properties, property surrounding the home in which they have interest. I think he's speaking to the very same issue that Mr. Sherlock spoke to about locational obsolescence. It says if any of the property uses surrounding areas are unsightly, cause unusual traffic flow, or generate noise, odor, that is not customary for a residential neighborhood, prospective purchases are likely to eliminate the home for consideration on other listed candidates. First line of first page, I should say second paragraph, he didn't see any signs of commercial usage. But then he goes on, and he makes reference to the analysis he conducted. He makes reference to, he indicates difficulty in finding any properties to do his analysis, but he indicates that what he takes a look at, and this is in the second full paragraph, he says in part, "While the appraiser did not find sales of homes in areas as quiet as the subjects that were impacted by commercial uses, he was able to find a sale dating back to two thousand six that is near Mass Road, a busy road that in some areas is lined with commercial uses." I respectfully submit, and the rest of this report goes on, it is not comparing apples to apples. The, the reference to the property that is, is here, and, and the proximity to a heavy commercial district compared to what is proposed here in terms of a light commercial use, a use that he didn't even notice, I think speaks to this report and perhaps the weight that the board may wish to give it. Also within that same section, that is of the material submitted by, on behalf of the Hobbs, it says here that the, not only does the Dennis, that was the Dennis Park neighborhood recently decimated by severe flooding, it goes on to say, "Mr. and Mrs. Hobbs decided to recommit to that area that has been important in their lives. Rather than abandon the area, they decided to invest in the area." There's been countless people who have testified as to Mr. Buckland's commitment to the area. I understand the concern about the board about, and I believe that Mr. Stewart made reference to the concern about what if there's a transfer down the road. Mr. Buckland has stated and made reference to conditions. He's obviously responded to Mr. Luby's concerns about various conditions. He's responded to those and would be willing to accept those. It's difficult for us to say, we'll agree to this, 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 and this, because there's going to be issues that are going to be raised by the board. We are open to being reasonable in terms of what need be should the board decide to consider granting this in terms of conditions. But he has committed to this area, and although it has nothing to do with the application, he, that's not the only property he owns down there. He owns two more, and two more in addition to the fact that Ms. Doan, who resides with him, owns the property across the street. In terms of section two, that we failed to demonstrate that the granting of the requested variances would not be contrary to the public interest, he concludes in the first paragraph, nevertheless, he proposes a use which in part, based upon past experience, would draw significant commercial traffic in the form of deliveries, customers, and employees to the residential streets of the neighborhood. I haven't heard any evidence to that effect. That's conclusory in nature, and, and certainly there's been nothing that's been submitted to substantiate that, and I would respectfully submit to the contrary. Their own appraiser made the assertion that I made reference to in the first page that would support the nature of the light commercial nature of this activity, not to mention the petition itself that was circulated and that was submitted for your consideration. And the rest of the information, of the assertions contained in this section that talks about what Mr. Buckland proposes for the operation, that it does not blend with the surrounding residential uses, I submit the contrary is true. Again, they go on to say, "For example, a repair shop generates noise, hazardous waste, requires boat and other equipment being serviced to be stored indefinitely on the property." The evidence that has been submitted, I would respectfully submit has been to the contrary. Goes on to say, "Common sense suggests that the use will actually threaten those interests." And goes so far as to cite a newspaper article of April twenty-fourth, two thousand ten, that I believe appeared in the Union Leader in support of that assertion. The, the, the next page, still within the same section, talks about a company profile. I believe Mr. Buckland spoke to it. I think they're referring to Granite State Dock and Marine. I don't know where this data comes from, but Mr. Buckland has spoke to the issue about Granite State Dock and Marine. The fact that it's a mobile repair service has nothing to do with what he's seeking here tonight. Continuing on, within the next paragraph, actually the first full paragraph, that he doesn't address the parking issue. I believe that to the extent that there's been some concerns, we've clarified that hopefully tonight. But he goes on to say, "Likewise, as noted above, Mr. Buckland's past illegal operation has drawn significant commercial traffic." And he goes on to articulate, "In the form of Sandal Auto Parts, Quirk Auto Parts, Robin Auto Parts, as well as Morgan and roadway tractor trailers." Mr. Buckland tells me, and he can certainly attest to it, apparently what happens in part in terms of tractor trailers is that when tractor trailers come to the intersection, I believe it is a Mass Road or one fourteen, they have some tendency to think that one fourteen continues, and they go down Dennis Park Road. Secondly, the, the roadway tractor, Mr. Buckland tells me that within the past week or two, or surely, within a short period of time, he had a motorcycle lift for sale on Craigslist, and he sold it on the internet. And the entity or the party that was buying it had to arrange for the pickup, and he thought that somebody was going to arrange for a pickup with a small vehicle. He showed up, he saw a roadway tractor in his driveway. He, he almost, he panicked. That's what it was for. He'll so testify. The, the rest, the rest of the assertions about chemical substances, you know, the only thing that we've seen about any issue about concern with the river was supposedly put forth by some anonymous person, and, and, and it had to do, to some degree, with something having to do with water sampling, and we provided you with Mr. Henderson's email to Mr. Buckland. That sets forth what, what the results of their samples showed. I haven't heard or seen any other documentation relative to any river contamination at all during my representation of Mr. Buckland. The next, that the spirit of the zoning ordinance would not be observed, or that would be observed with the granting of the variances, there's just, again, a conclusory statement. There's no factual basis to, to support the assertion that, that the spirit of the ordinance wouldn't be observed, and I believe that we've made that out. Substantial justice would be done, that we've failed to establish that. And he goes on in section four, describing his loss, Mr. Buckland again relies upon his unlawful conduct of operating a commercial enterprise on a residential lot. I believe that because they bring it up, this board had indicated that the purpose of this board, to the extent there was any misunderstanding, call it what you will, the purpose of this process was, was to address those issues. Mr. Buckland came before the board almost a year ago to deal with the grandfathered use issue. We all know what the history of that is, an appeal was filed. That's on hold, and we've come before the board to seek a variance. Right, wrong, or indifferent, to keep making that assertion in the record, I don't think is right, and I, I, I can certainly understand that an abutter has an interest and a right to be heard relative to the application. But the repeated assertion, it, for lack of a better phrase, it gets old. In terms of the failure to, to establish the unnecessary hardship, I believe that I've attempted to address that. I think Mr. Buckland, as well as other members here, have done that, even Mr. Roy to some degree. So I, I respectfully submit that the material that's been offered in support of the objection falls far short. I, I will say that the additional material that was submitted, Mr. Buckland, in terms of these exhibits, one through four, Mr. Buckland spoke to Granite State Dock and Marine, which is tab one. Tab two, these are photographs that go back to nineteen ninety-seven. What relevancy they have here, I, I don't, I don't know. Tab, tab three, again, we don't hear what these supposedly are supposed to, to show, and I'm concerned about the fact that the board reads into them, and certainly they can take it for what way, way it is, or they assign to it. But they're looking to cast in the light that's most disadvantageous to Mr. Buckland, when we don't even know what the heck they're trying to show. This is a photograph, tab three, as I understand it, of Mr. Buckland. The issue in terms of the retaining wall, as I represented to the board, is before the DES. Is that what this is supposedly dealing with? I respectfully submit that no weight should be given to that photograph, the one preceding, and tab number four, this letter from DES to Mr. Buckland, as I indicated to the board, he's retained the services of Meridian Land Services as well, not only for the issue of preparing the plan or the compiled plan, but also to assist in dealing with the issue with the wetlands folks. And that what's the subject of this letter, Mr. Buckland tells me that this letter has been forwarded to Timothy Ferwerter at DES, the licensed soil scientist and wetland specialist that he's dealing with to address this issue. This issue about the retaining wall, as I understand it in speaking with Mr. Ferwerter, is the, for lack of a better phrase, the one that he was focusing on, and that these other issues that are referenced in this letter, he was going to deal with once the retaining wall issue was addressed. Mr. Buckland's not ignoring anything. This letter, according to Mr. Buckland, has been given to Mr. Ferwerter, and Mr. Ferwerter is dealing with DES. So to the extent that the board is going to consider or look at these things, having been submitted at the last minute, that's what I understand to be the case as it relates to those. With that, I believe I, I have adequately set forth the items I'd like to, by way of rebuttal.
Anybody have any questions, or Attorney Gallant?
No. Actually, he clarified a lot of the questions I would have had, so I appreciate that.
Attorney Gallant, you, you did mention under tab four, you know, the wetlands bureau complaint files. I mean, let, we've got that letter of deficiency about the, well, that retaining wall, too seasonal docks and stuff like that. Can you, can you speak to those at all?
I can only speak to what I understand based upon my dialogue and speaking with Mr. Ferwerter. We were before the DES on March eleventh to deal with the issue principally of the retaining wall. During my discussion with him, and I think, I don't know if it was directly with Mr. Ferwerter or in concert with Mr. Buckland, this issue came up, and it's my understanding that, because in all candidness, Mr. Buckland got a little concerned about these things being addressed. Because he didn't like the inference that somehow, some way, that it appears that he's not addressing these issues, and my understanding based upon the dialogue with Mr. Ferwerter was that he was going to be addressing these issues once the retaining wall issue was addressed. But I will represent to this board that, again, quite frankly, at my recommendation, he engaged the services of, of Meridian, a licensed soil scientist, to deal with Department of Environmental Services. He is not ducking any issues dealing with DES. The reference to this material, or to attempt to create an inference that he is, couldn't be further from the truth. And if you would like, I'll get a letter from Mr. Ferwerter setting this forth. I have no problem doing that whatsoever.
I'm not saying anything about him not doing anything about it. I've just, I was, I was obviously reading some of these because they were presented as evidence, and, and they specifically refer to the docks that were constructed. Now, were these docks that he constructed, or were they there, if they were constructed, according to the letters, it looks like, again, they were constructed before permits were issued and.
They, they may have been. They, they may have been. I'm, I'm not in a position.
And he's working to resolve these is what, is the point you're making.
That, that is absolutely correct.
Okay.
That is absolutely correct.
Yeah, no, I realize that some of these letters are dated, are dated way back.
Well, the other disconcerting, and I'm repeating myself, is that I'm seeing these tonight.
I, I'm going to stop you there, only for the fact that. I, I'm going to stop you there, only for the fact that we received a number of emails today for things that have, that have come in in the last few days, so, from both sides. So let's not point to any fingers.
Well, only to respond, and all due respect, Mr. Chairman, the, the one item that I submitted tonight was to deal with the mysterious packet that appeared before the board...
I received emails today that, for things that had been...
A lot of those emails were received while Derek was on vacation, so we didn't get them.
I'm just saying the board received them at a specific time, so.
I, I appreciate that. Thank you.
And it doesn't help our arguments here, or it doesn't help any, anything as we go forward.
I don't, I don't appear to, I don't mean to be argumentative on that point.
All right, any other questions for Attorney Galant?
At this point, can I make a motion that we continue this to next month as, as it sits?
Yep.
Yes, you may.
I'll second.
To the, wait, June meeting?
Yes, it would be the June...
Continue the public hearing.
Be June first and we'd actually be meeting across the hall in the boardroom because the board of, the board of selectmen will not be meeting on Memorial Day. And they're going to meet Tuesday. So unless their meeting is done by seven.
Which we doubt.
Yeah. And I'd like to make the motion that we continue this to the June meeting to include termination of the, of the public.
Yeah, we'll continue the public hearing.
We'll continue it at that point.
I'll second. No.
Who seconded? You seconded?
I second.
Okay, any discussion on that continuance? Any questions from Attorney Galant or Attorney Bissen on continuing or any issues on that before we... June okay?
I have, I have no questions. I'm fine with it.
Attorney Bissen? All right. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed or abstained?
Before we close for the night, I would just like to say that I took a drive down by there. And if you guys haven't yet, I would suggest that you do. I think it would be very helpful if you consider, as we deliberate and things like that, it would be very helpful to see the property enabling.
Okay.
I actually took a drive down there during the last round.
Me too, me too. On this, on this application though, we've, we've gotten a lot, obviously board, you know, please digest it in the next thirty or so days to come prepared to hear the remainder of the case and deliberate. If you have, want to make any points, please write them down. If you thought of any conditions that you want to talk about, please write those down as well. All right, so just come prepared to talk to those so that we can expeditiously go through the deliberation once we get to that point. All right. We had no other items on the public hearing correspondence. We talked about the spring planning zoning conference.
Yeah, that, the registration is between seven forty-five and eight thirty. Between eight thirty and nine is the welcome and orientation. And then sessions begin at nine o'clock. You would ask for the time.
Yep, great. Thank you.
Just while we adjourn, could you also let the public know that it will not be televised next month? If any interested parties do want to continue to be a part of this, then they would have to be here physically themselves.
Okay. Well, whoever's left, we're not going to be televised on June first.
I'm just saying, enter the TV.
Yep, they're here.
I like reviewing.
Look at the minutes.
I'd like to give everybody an open invitation. If you'd like to come down, I'd be happy to show you. Gail come down the other day, I think it enlightened her a little bit.
Okay.
Anytime, anybody wants to come down, feel free.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Good evening. Anything else?
One other thing, we did receive notification today of a suit for the martel, the first martel.
We received what?
A suit in Superior Court for the first, with the access from Lisa Drive.
Yep.
So I'll be preparing that certified record to be submitted.
Have we received a, an appeal to the second martel?
Rehearing request?
Rehearing request, I should say, thank you.
We have not received a rehearing request to date, but that would not need to be in until Thursday, this Thursday.
Okay, just a second. The martels have taken the, the ca, the, the first?
Denial.
Denial to Superior Court?
Yes.
When, when did we deny that?
I believe it was the January eighteenth meeting. But because the way that fell, you didn't receive the rehearing request till the middle of February, which means you didn't actually act on it till the March meeting.
Right.
And we just received notice today.
Because they were probably, they're holding it because they have the second...
They need to file it by, by...
They have to file it within thirty days, but then they have so many days that they have to, to serve it, to serve it to the town.
So they, so they did file it by like April first with Superior?
They filed it, they filed, it's my understanding. I haven't had the chance to review it, but they filed it. And if not, I'll highlight that for Attorney Drusher.
That's just a little, yeah, that's a little concerning. It seems like, it seems like it was quite a while ago that we did the first one.
But I think we received it on the very last day that they could serve us with it. I think that's why it took so long, so.
Yeah, and there was two months between...
And we, we also, our decision on the slaughterhouse was upheld.
Yep, on Abdel Kader.
upheld, the Kader was upheld and supir, Supreme Court.
All right, any other business? Hearing, no business? Okay, a second?
Aye, 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 aye.
Okay, Ed's got the second. All in favor say aye, aye.
Look, oh my God.
Have a good evening.